All right, good to see everybody. Call the city council meeting order work session today's date. Call the city council meeting order work session today's date.
Time now, medical five thirty-eight hours.
Under adoption agenda, if the council mayor wish to revise the agenda, the motion add or delude an item will be entertained before the adoption of the agenda. Will there be any from the council? Hearing that, seeing that, entertain a motion to approve. So moved. So moved and properly said, under discussion. Under discussion, hearing that and seeing that all those favors say aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. In our honor for discussion. Out of number one. You and five oh presentation, Chief Goyette. If you would. Whatever you ready, chief, whatever you ready.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna be very, really, really brief. I don't want to take too much of BJ's time. I've included BJ's biography as well as her mission statement with her company. For those who don't know, she's the founder and CEO of You and Five Oh out of Durham, North Carolina. We've partnered with You and Five Oh countless time. I don't even know how many times, to be honest with you, over the past six years. We've not had a workshop here in Kinston in the past year, so we've reached out to BJ, wanted to know if she'd be more willing to come to Kinston and do a workshop. And we're actually gonna have two. We're gonna have one workshop in November and one in December. Well, I'll provide those dates at a later time, but it's gonna be at the gate, Lenore County. And those will be evening workshops. And those workshops are basically law enforcement as well as our community, having community engagement together. So. Tonight's presentation by BJ will be extremely condensed version. For those that have not had an opportunity to go to any of those workshops. I would encourage you to go to the ones we're gonna have in November and December. Very excited about that. So without further ado, I'm gonna go ahead and invite BJ up here and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you, chief. Good to see you, BJ. Council, good to see you today.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Goyette, for having me. And I'm gonna be, what I'm hopefully going to do is, like you said, go through a little bit of what I do in the community, but also the what we're trying to do by building community policing and what that looks like, the responsibility of law enforcement as well as the responsibility of the community. And like you said, what the business was started to. In this climate, basically, we started this, or I started this, in order to develop a relationship to help people mainly to get home safely with law enforcement. So to provide the guidelines in order to help people understand how to interact safely, the information to proceed as to filing complaints on misconduct and promote mutual respect and understanding between the community and law enforcement. We want to expand the knowledge of your constitutional rights, increase your awareness of the laws that govern the officers, and increase your awareness of the perspective of, from the law enforcement, too. As you mentioned, I've been here since 2019, the leadership through 2022. I've done six hundred and ninety, talked to six hundred and ninety-three persons. Mainly those have been middle school and high school. Thanks to councilperson Solomon. I've been in a lot of schools, mainly, and those numbers kind of reflect that. This is also a safe space. It's judgment-free. You are welcome to ask any questions. I tell people when they come at the door, say what you want to say, say how you want to say it. I don't care. I just need you to be honest and open because this is a space for us to have that candid conversation. I ain't trying to change nobody's mind by the popo, about twelve. Because what I want, what I tell people when they come in, no matter how you feel about twelve or five oh, you can still walk out of here feeling the same way. The reason I'm doing this is because I need people to get home. That's it, period. I need law enforcement to get home, and I need community members to come home. So this is not about changing people's minds about law enforcement, but what I'm also trying to do is just offer a perspective that you may not be aware of. How many people recognize this face? Everybody basically recognize that. I don't have to put a name under it, and you know who that is. How many people recognize this name? Don't hear any name, don't hear anything. How many people recognize that face? Sergeant Michael Davis is a sheriff, or was a sheriff down in Low, uh, Lenoke, L-O-N-O-K-E, Arkansas, a couple of years ago. He stopped an individual about zero early hours, and the individual was two people in the car about three o'clock in the morning, again, zero early hours, and he pulled the car over, and the driver got out and reached in the back of the truck. According to Sergeant Davis, he told the person, let me see your hands, let me see, see your hands, and he ended up shooting and killing the individual. How many recognize this name? How many recognize that face? That's Hunter Britton, a white male that most in this room did not hear about. And the reason I do this, and I'm gonna do this again as I go in, is that black bodies are always, you hear about that. This was on the news, but it wasn't on that thirty-second loop constantly in the press. So what I ask folks when they get there is, what do you want to know about law enforcement? Because I want to know what they know, so I can help guide that. A lot of time what they ask me, I'm going to give it to them in the workshop. What do you want to know? Because a lot of people don't know what law enforcement does. They don't know, understand why we do what we do. Not that you need to agree with it, but this is an industry, and people just don't understand what it is and why they do the work. What I want people to do is understand they can exercise their rights. We want people to understand they have a right to exercise their constitutional rights. But the thing is, I don't need you to continue to exercise those rights until you're dead right. I need you to get home. Understand that, because that is the priority. Basic information, basic information, name, date of birth, and address, and any information of the law enforcement is inquiring of you. After that, you ain't gotta talk no more. You can tell them, I, you know, I'd rather talk to a law, I'd rather talk to an attorney. You can talk to them about anything that you want to talk to them about. You can say, I just came from my mama's house, I'm going to my daddy's house, I'm going to my grandfather's house. You can tell them anything you want to, but understand you have the right after you give them the basic information and the things that they need to do the investigation, and then you can stop talking. And a lot of people don't understand that, that at that moment you could say, I don't want to talk to you, I don't want to talk to you anymore, and I'd rather talk to a lawyer. You can do that. And people don't understand sometimes that they can do that. I don't know how many are familiar with the Washington Post. They've been tracking police shootings since 2015. I am currently reading every one of them for 2024. I am on eight hundred and something, now nine hundred and nine have been killed so far. Over the last, let's call it ten years, ten thousand one hundred and forty-one have been killed by law enforcement. And what you don't hear when they put that, that information out, that eight thousand of them were armed. Armed can mean a gun, a knife, armed could be a bat, anything that's gonna cause somebody injury. And then three hundred and plus those were replica. Personally, as a law enforcement officer, if it looks like a gun, if it looks like a duck, it's a duck. Have you seen guns today that kids are playing with? It looks like a real gun. So that's an average of one thousand persons who are killed annually. Nobody wants anybody to die, but I wanted to let you to see what that is. What they do not track, and what I'm currently looking at, this is a real gun. This is a gun that I show at the workshop. That's why we tell people, you cannot have anything in your hand when you're talking to law enforcement if you're the person they're engaging with. It looks like a cellphone, but it actually is a weapon. Of the, of the stuff that I've been looking at with the Washington Post and reading these articles, seventy percent of them were given a verbal command to do something. Drop the knife, drop the gun, and they had verbal commands, and almost seventy percent of the individuals were at least offered some type of verbal command by police officers. You don't see that in a report. That's significant, if you think about it, as far as lives of concern that could have been saved if the individual had cooperated. And that's the thing that I'm about in You and Five Oh. Cooperate, comply, and file a complaint later. This is an article that was on The Root. The Root is a newspaper article. Basically, it's a black newspaper. It's online. Someone sent this to me a couple of years ago, was it, because it was issued or written on, in 2022. The Root, as you can see, the title of it was, while mass shooters who police, white mass shooters who police allowed to live to see another day. So they had these names listed. On the left-hand side, as you can recognize, all those primarily are black individuals who were killed by law enforcement. And you can see what they were killed for, or the reason that the interaction occurred. I have an asterisk beside Ahmaud Arbery because that was not a police action. There was no law enforcement was involved in that. The individual was a law enforcement, but he was not doing a law enforcement duty, but they listed Ahmaud Arbery in that particular article. Again, you can see everything on the left side, the individuals' names. Robert Bowers is a white male who went into the synagogue and killed individuals. They shot him, but he survived. On the right-hand side, of course, you recognize the name George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. The rest of the names are white mass shooters. Dylan Roof, the church, Holmes, the movie, the individual that went into the black grocery store, the, um, July Fourth One. Those are all the white males who are mass shooters. Those individuals killed a hundred and, killed and/or injured a hundred and thirty-six persons. Zero on the other side. Was the difference is, the only difference between these two, the white mass shooters complied. They put their hands up, they stopped, they did everything the police officer asked them to do. They got out of the car, they got on their knees, they put their hands behind their back. The only difference, the primary difference between the two of these is compliance, compliance. And they killed a hundred and thirty-six, or injured a hundred and thirty-six persons. And the black persons on the other side died for misdemeanor, for the most part, crimes. How many know the name Tyreek Hill? How many does that, does that recognize the name Tyreek Hill? Miami Dolphins has got stopped in September. How many know Jason Mckay, Mckenna? Does that ring a bell for anybody? Jason is a white male that was killed in Los Angeles Police Department of this year in February. He was having a mental health crisis. Seven police officers responded to him, and he turned and obeyed at one point and turned back around and started walking toward the officers. It turned out in his hand, he had a plastic, white utensil fork. The police chief in the Los Angeles Police Department said out loud, I have a concern about this shooting, and nobody in this room has heard anything about that shooting. Again, just emphasizing the fact, Tyreek Hill was on a constant loop. Jason Mckenna, chief said he had concerns, and nobody in his room has heard of that name. I've been doing this since 2015. And I'm almost close to a little over thirty-five hundred persons that I've talked to in those, in that timeframe. And every time I do these conversations, these five things come up, or either all of them, some of them, or most of them. And what they're saying is, lack of respect, fear of exercising their constitutional rights, misconduct, unprofessionalism, complaints not handled or taken seriously, and the lack of understanding of law enforcement. I'll kind of give you the last one, because that's what I'm seeing. The fact that when people come into my workshop, they really don't understand what law enforcement does and how they work. One of the most rewarding things when people leave the presentation, they believe, and they tell me they've been heard, and then the other thing is, they say, I never thought of it that way. Because now they've been given another opportunity to hear another perspective, and that's all I'm asking. Remember, I don't need you to change your mind, I need you to get home. Kinston Police Department designed a You and Five Oh police training. They did that because they wanted to know, because I've been working here since 2019 and interacting with their community, they wanted to know, obviously, what was the community saying to me, and then they wanted that to be told to their officers on the street, because they wanted them to understand what the community's saying, not only here, but beyond, and what I had been hearing. And we did that. They helped design that and how they wanted to do that. They wanted to know, make sure they knew why, the officers. It's not personal, it's history. Black Americans in this country, in the history with policing, it's not personal, and they need their young officers and officers to understand the reason the black community, primarily black community, has an issue with law enforcement is due to history. It's not about you, it's about the history. And then also talking about the heavy lift. The officers have to recognize, they have to do the heavy lift. They're the professionals, they're the ones that has to do most of the work. And then, of course, I go over the top five concerns that I just listed for you. It also creates a safe space. They get to talk and talk about what's concerning them about this climate. We talk about the community and their concern with police, but we gotta remember, these are human beings working in a climate where a lot of folks don't like them simply because of the uniform that they wear. I also learned something from that, that we had some elected officials, councilperson Solomon was there, I had a couple of citizens there. What I took away from that, I will not do that again, because I need this space to be safe for them, to be able to speak freely. If we do do it again, it'll probably be in there with the, with the executive team, but not for the frontline officers, because they didn't feel comfortable being able to speak freely. So I learned that, and I heard that from them, and I'm gonna respect that. If we ever do that again, you know, mainly, it will always just be the officers. The results of the community, things that we've done here, we, like I said, we did six hundred and ninety-three based on my calculation. We were able to analyze two hundred and fifty, fifteen of those individuals. Eighty percent of those were eighteen or younger, and they had a twenty-two percent increase of knowledge and a four percent increase in their comfort level with law enforcement. Knowledge is power. The results of the Kinston Police You and Five Oh training, they had the sworn and non-s sworn attend, and I, we got a ninety percent high impact, high delivery of the, of the training. So they liked what they saw and liked what they heard, participating in that. Kinston Police Department's mission statement and values. If you remember the top five that I was telling you about, they have respect, respecting the constitutional rights, professionalism, actually, if you look at it, they have compassion before professionalism, and complaints are encouraged by the Kinston Police Department. So what is it that law enforcement, when we have these conversations out here in the community, what are we, what am I saying and what are we hoping with relationship with Kinston in the room, that they realize that it's a heavy lift? It's a heavy lift for law enforcement to do what they need to do in this climate. They gotta deliver good customer service, they gotta earn the trust. They also have to realize that the impact of others has an impact here. The officer that shot Sonia Massey has an impact here. An officer doing something in, in State X has an impact here on the officers, and the officers have to carry that, even though they had nothing to do with that. So they have to realize that. And then the accountability of that. And they realize it is on them to do and be accountable to the community, the actions as to what they do. The role of the community, hopefully, is to understand that they're trying to do the best they can, and that that is just, it's just a job that they need to do, and the leadership understands that that is their job to make sure that everybody is accountable. The community, the community's commendation, the community has a role in this as well. Your experience, your customer experience. You don't really hear or talk about or think about customer experience when you think about law enforcement, but you're getting a service. And so when you hear something happens over in State X or City X, what I'm asking the community to do is talk about the experience you had with the officer that interacted with you. That experience should be how you gauge your local agency, because that tells you how the philosophy and the culture of the agency is working. Define your expectations as a community. What is it that you want from your law enforcement agency? What is it that you expect from them? Make it vocal, go into the building and talk to them. And then also, what is your role? What is your role during the interaction? We spend a lot of time talking about what the law enforcement does. What is it that you're doing? What is it that you're doing in that interaction that could cause that interaction to go south? Your accountability as a community, what is your role to do that? And then also, we have to remember that not either ancestor system is today. We have to understand, we have to remember the history, we have to remember the history. We have to understand that the ancestors' systems are not today, and the individuals that created that archaic and awful system then are not here today, and these individuals are trying to do better. Community. My top five. These are my top five, the what I look for and what I would tell you to look for as a community when you look at your law enforcement department. What you should be looking for. Commendations. Is it easy to do a commendation? You know, file and let them know that this is what we expect of our police officers. This is what we expect. I understand there was something that happened a few weeks ago. They were, the officers were out in the community, and there was grass growing really tall, and they said the kids have to walk through that. And police officers went out there and cut the grass. Based on what I'm understanding, nobody in the executive team knew anything about it. What that says to me is the philosophy and the culture is getting down to the front line. What I also want, may want to know, too, is because of that, the citizens that saw that, did they send a letter of thank you to the officer? Did they acknowledge and commend the officers for doing that? Complaints, gotta file complaints, have got to file complaints on police officers if you, if they're, if they're not acting in a manner that is unprofessional. There's no way, as a police executive, I can deal with a police officer, deal with an issue unless you tell me. The issue that I want folks to understand, it has an impact internally if you let the executives and the leadership know that something is going on on officer. And no expectation that officer is gonna be fired. There's this belief that an officer can't make a mistake. They're human beings. They're gonna make mistakes. You need to catch that mistake. So in saying, you know, Officer BJ been like that for five years, right? And then Officer BJ does something that brings national attention to this, but you, there's no paper trail on Officer BJ, because nobody has filed a complaint, so nobody had time to take care of that. So the responsibility for me and the things that I'm looking for is, how easy is that to file complaints? I noticed that on the overview of the police department, right under Chief Goyette's photo, there's a click for you to do that. Make filing complaints easy for the public. Also, one thing I want to plug in, we just released a podcast with Chief Goyette on my podcast today, so he's there if anybody wants to listen to that. Public reports and, public reports on complaints. I think it was night, 2023? They had thirty-plus thousand calls for service. Twenty-three complaints for the year. Thirty thousand calls for service, twenty-three complaints. Anybody that takes a look at that says, I ain't got no problems. So if you have issues, then they're not showing up. But if you look at the numbers, it says something else. Quarter, quarterly and annual reports, the reports are being given to you, that you can see what the officers are doing. Also, if there are things and concerns in your particular area or in your community, that's a good way to see if the, if the officers are, they're addressing it and what they're doing professionally to address the issues in the community. Mixed website pics. What I mean by that is, you're not just looking at cars, you're not just looking at officers standing there in their SWAT stuff and their dogs. You're seeing pictures on their website that shows them intermingling with community members. So look for mixed website pics on your, on police officers or police departments. Seating, this is just a thing for me that I learned as I grew up in the police department. When you go to community meetings, where are your police officers sitting? Are they sitting? Are they sitting all together? Are they standing at the back of the room? Or are they sitting down and communicating with community members at these community members? It makes a difference. That's how you start building relationships. And then this is how you work toward community policing. That's kind of what we try to do, but the bottom line is, everybody wants to get home. R E S P C T, respect on both sides of this. We gotta understand each other's role, and we want to be heard and understood, and recognize that both of us are human beings, and we want to get home, period. Just watch what he does. He's playing basketball, and watch what he does, and watch the car that goes by. It's a police car. This is a ten-year-old male in the 2020 that saw this car, and he hid behind his father. Said they don't talk about police in his, in his home, that they don't have any problems with law enforcement, and they live in an affluent community. He didn't understand why his child did that. So I use this video in my workshop to make it clear the impact this climate is having on our smallest and most innocent community members. So if you were for just a few minutes, I'm gonna talk about the ten-year-old. He said he hid behind that because they killed George Floyd, and that's not okay. You may or may not know the name Sir Robert Pill. He's considered a father of modern policing. One of his policing principles states that police are the community, and the community are the police. Over the ten years, I've listened to stories from members of communities and how this climate is impacting them, and I hope I'm giving them information and perspectives that can help them understand policing, and most importantly, how to safely get home. So I want to share some stories that you're not gonna always hear, and they too are not okay stories, of members of this community who serve in the capacity of police. I would imagine in this climate, these who serve, you don't get to hear that side of the story. Stories like during this climate, and you can, this climate, if you will, tag it back to 2014, that's Michael Brown and Eric Garner and Ford. So when I say climate, I think we all understand what I'm saying. Stories like the black officer leaving his home, and his four-year-old daughter asks, who are you gonna kill today, Dad? Or the white police officer executive whose very young son hides behind him when a colleague in a patrol car stops by his home. Or the black female officer who's been retired nine-plus years, not welcome at a social justice meeting after George Floyd because she used to be a police officer. Or the white female officer who rides through a housing community, and the kids are saying, F the police, and flipping her off. She asks, what am I supposed to do with that? I mumbled some words, because I had no answer for her. A lot of this rests at the door of the community. Please understand it is a collaborative effort, this journey toward community policing. I can't fix it. Hate is being sown into children toward a person who's done them no harm and may cause them not to seek profession, the profession if they need help. Again, Eric Garner and Michael Brown, 2014, ten years ago. You can be an officer in the state at the age of twenty. Do the math. Most, most of our new and next generation of officers were in middle and high school, yet by simply putting on the uniform of the job, that human gets to feel the hate and hear all the vile rhetoric from other humans about the profession and the climate they did not create. Yet they are voluntarily joining the profession, which in my opinion is great, because this is the generation that grew up at the beginning of this climate and will probably have some ideas on how to work towards climate change, which will benefit the entire community. It's a diverse group of twenty-somethings, and we need more diversity in this profession. Research has shown black and Hispanics use less force in communities of color, and women across all racial, ethnic lines use less force and are perceived as most trustworthy. Part of the diversity in local agencies is they should reflect the community they serve, but mostly, it's about hiring people who are different in terms of thoughts and background. This allows people to be creative, because they see the world differently. It is then you begin to have a multitude of people talking and speaking about real change for the future of policing. My job as an officer, like most, didn't and doesn't define me. I identify as a human, just like community members identify as human. The starting point of all police interactions should start at recognizing each other as human first. It is from that point forward, accountability rests squarely on the social, shoulders of both humans. It's part of why KPD continues to support the conversations around police interactions with the community. It creates a safe, it creates a space for the police to see the community and the community to see the police, with the hope they both leave seeing a human. It's not an easy task to unite black, white, and brown descendants of today to fix the mistakes of the past, but it is the task before us, and it is one we can all agree must be done together as a community. No law will change law enforcement. We, the people, will. This change must come from within the system, period. This profession has to do with humans interacting with each other, what they both want at the end of their day, and it does not, does not matter what kind of day they may be having, it is just, at the end of that day, they both want to get to the place they call home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Council, and thank you, Chief Goyette, for that presentation.
Thank you, Chief Goyette, for that presentation. I'll move on to item number two, unless there's any questions from the council as it pertains to the.
Mayor, I had a question for Ms. BJ if you don't mind, sir.
Yes, sir.
BJ, in your travel, what do you, what does the numbers look like when you, you travel? I think you said Kinston had thirty thousand calls and twenty-three complaints. As you travel, do you see that number higher throughout different communities, the size of Kinston? Or does that number fluctuate?
That's a good question. I don't know because I have not been in that many smaller communities. So I don't know the answer to that.
What about the larger communities that you've been in?
Well, you're gonna have, you're gonna have larger complaints, the larger your community.
Right.
And also depending on the relationship you have and making sure that people understand how to complain. There was a chief that came to our organization and basically said, I, he went out into the community and literally said, file complaints on our police officers. He made it easy to file complaints. He put complaint forms and libraries and everything. He was, and, and what you need to understand what that does is sending a message to me as an officer. Cause when I did that, I was an officer and I was like, whoa, 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 what you doing? Right? But what is, what he was doing was saying, I need to know what my officers are doing and I need you, community, to tell me. And then it's also telling me as an officer, well, I gotta do right. Cause there's more, it's, you know, whatever the twenty, yeah, it's more eyes on me. And the chief has said for me to file complaints if I am not satisfied. And so that's what that does. People don't understand that that has an impact on the culture. Because he's sending a message. And when you send a message, it has a, it has an impact on the culture. Because people are going to start thinking about, I have, always have to be professional.
BJ, I want to thank you again for coming out tonight. I really appreciate Chief Goyette and our police department's willingness to work with you and work with our citizens to educate us and, and build positive relationships within the community. So I think that's really important. I, I really appreciate the presentation tonight. I understand it was a abbreviated version of it, as Chief Goyette suggested in the beginning. But there was one slide in there that, that made me a bit uncomfortable. And I wanted to lean into that discomfort because I believe that's how we grow. That's how we, we move forward as a community and build those positive relationships. But it was around the slide, it stated, there was a, the difference between mass shooters who've killed, you know, over a hundred people surviving those police encounters and people who had been arrested or their encounter was initiated because of jaywalking or a traffic stop, unfortunately being killed in those encounters. And you said the difference was because the mass shooters complied in their situations. I, I do want to, at least in my perception of that, is I think there's a level of assumption that goes in that, that we just can't guarantee that it was just because they complied, that, that's the reason they survived. If we know that there are implicit biases in policing and that's what we're working to combat here in Kinston. Our police department does, I think, a, a good job of trying to combat that. We can't say that the only difference would be that the mass shooters complied if we know that those biases exist. If also, if there's a significant amount of officers, even in some of those cases, who have a history of complaints against them on their record, like Derek Chauvin in the murder of George Floyd had, I think, eighteen prior complaints prior to that situation. So we know that there's some differences there that even if the individual had complied, it could have even still led to a deadly encounter. So that was the, the portion that made me a bit uncomfortable. So I just wanted to let that out there because I believe we have to lean into that discomfort when we have these conversations so that we can grow and move forward and, and have some constructive conversations. All right, thank you, Councilman Suggs for that.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to Councilman Suggs with appreciation for him sharing that. And I think one thing that I've found is that in spite of any commendations that, you know, we may give for our officers, because, you know, we're, I mean, we're firm believers in celebrating, you know, what our officers do right. And it's the little things and the things that go unseen, you know, like the cutting the grass or observing, you know, officers leaving to go get gas for someone or, you know, pushing a car on a major highway. And that even speaking and sharing one's opinion, you know, we talked about this, about that which is wrong, that it does not say that you don't support law enforcement, but it just says that we are all humans. And as you're saying, that, that we're all humans. And I think that's something, you know, driven in, in those conversations because it would be good for it to come to a place where that safe space, when these conversations are held, are your citizens are in the same room, your law enforcement officers are in the same room, and people are able to have that conversation confronting that elephant that's in the room. And, and that is difficult, that, you know, you can't conquer what you're not willing to confront. And, you know, speaking, you know, when something is of concern, doesn't mean that it's an absolute. And I just think that sometimes that, that, that we can be ultra sensitive. And I just think, you know, with your coming back, you know, the hope and goal would be for members of the community to share their voices. And it's important for them to hear from our present law enforcement officers in so much as they can hear, you know what I'm saying, their hearts. You know what I'm saying, and their true intentions. You know, because it's one thing for the chief and, and his majors, you know what I'm saying? When they're out on the front lines and they convey what they desire the heartbeat of this organization to be. But what happens when your, your, your lower ranking law enforcement officer is able to see that same sentiment?
All right, thank you for your comments, Councilwoman Solomon. Any other comments from the council that pertains to that last presentation? All right, here now, seeing now, item number two, consider approval of physical year 2024, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, Chief Goyette.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Council. Come to you tonight to request the approval of the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, also known as JAG. The JAG grant was, began in 2005 and was named after Officer Edward Byrne. Edward Byrne was a twenty-two-year-old NYPD officer who served with the 103rd Precinct. He was in his car and was shot by two people. And in order to honor his life, the Bureau of Justice Administration placed that grant in his name. This is a grant that we've gotten every year since 2019. This year's grant is for a total of fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. We split that with the Linnell County Sheriff's Office. With the funds that we, we, we will receive, we're going to purchase seven Honor Guard uniforms. We currently have one Honor Guard member. We've got six more that want to join. So once we receive these funds, we'll be, we'll be able to purchase those Honor Guard, Honor Guard uniforms. The Linnell County Sheriff's Office is going to use those funds to purchase some rifle ballistic vests. We currently already have those, so they're, they're looking to buy that. The Kinston Police Department, City of Kinston will be in charge of the grant. We'll oversee it. And there is no match in, in this grant whatsoever. This is a one-year grant. It will end next September, 2025. If the council does agree to accept this grant, I will meet with our finance director and we'll go ahead and get, establish a grant project in the future. And she will present that to the city council in, in a month or two and we'll move forward.
Well, thank you, Chief, for always exploring that option to go out and look for funding that may benefit, you know, law enforcement officers in the city and/or county. And I understand it's even better when you apply and with multiple agencies and you're able to get more bang for your buck. So thank you so much for doing that.
Yes, sir.
And look forward to, to, to receiving that grant. Anything from the council as it relates to this grant? All right, hearing now, seeing now, item number three, consider approval of special event permit for K F P H Church Fall Festival. Chief.
All right, this is, again, this is another annual special event that takes place at First PH Church. This will be on October 26, 2024, between 4:30 PM and 7:30 PM. Basically, the only reason why they require a special, why we require a special event permit is the, the road right in front of the church, which is, I want to, it's a Phillips Road between Lutheran and Kennedy Lane that will be closed during that time. This event's going to be around a hundred people. It's open to the public. They're going to serve hot dogs, chips and sodas. Obviously, they will not have the alcohol there at the church event. And attendees will utilize restrooms and trash cans at the church. The hold homeless agreement has been signed and the City of Kinston is listed as the insurance certificate holder. And we'll be there for that event.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Attorney, you have anything you'd like to entertain as it relates to insurance? Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anything from the council as it relates to this special event permit? Hearing now, seeing now, item number three. Correction, number four, consider approval of special event permit for Kinston Athletics Incorporated, charity softball game, Chief.
All right, this is going to be for, from Brian Hanks with the Kinston Athletics and Freedom Classic. This is going to be the same date, Saturday, correct, Saturday, October 26 at Granger Stadium between 2:00 PM and 8:00 PM. This is basically a charity softball alumni event between North Linnell High School and South Linnell High School. Will not require street closure. They, they've already rented out the facility. You're looking at about 200 people for this particular event. They're going to utilize prepackaged concessions. And the spectators will use the restrooms and trash cans at the stadium. The hold homeless agreement has been signed and the City of Kinston is listed as the insurance certificate holder. Whenever the packet was submitted to the council, we did not have that. But I do have it now and it's attached. And it does say, City of Kinston, 207 East King Street.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Attorney, would you like to entertain? All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anything from the council as it relates to this special event permit? All right, hearing now, seeing now, we can move on to item number five. Consider approval of special event permit for Battle of the Badges, Chief, Goyette.
All right, so this is going to be another charity softball event. This will take place on Saturday, November 2nd. Originally, it was going to be the second and third, but it's just going to be a one-day event. It's going to take place at Granger Stadium. The rental agreement has been signed. There will be no street closure. It's a fundraising project, open to the public. This will be the third year that this event has taken place. They're going to use food trucks at the event. They'll have to have their up-to-date license for that to take place. And they're going to use the restrooms and trash cans there. The hold homeless agreement has been signed. The certificate holder will be the City of Kinston, but as of right now, it's not. The lady who the softball organization was trying to get the insurance from today, she had a family emergency, so she will submit that to me. She said no later by Thursday. And I'll make sure that we have that in place before that event takes place.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Attorney, would you like to entertain as it relates to subject to, to insurance?
Yeah, subject to obtaining the, the correct insurance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Proton.
Chief, you didn't give us the time on that.
Starts at eight o'clock and the, well, the gates open at seven. The first game starts at eight o'clock. I think there's six, uh, public safety departments that'll be taking place in there. I think we have a team there, several, several departments around us to include some volunteer fire departments.
Yes, sir, look forward to seeing that. That's the other part of correction as well, so they will be there. All right, any further discussion as it relates to the Battle of the Badges special event permit? All right, hearing now, seeing now, item number six, consider approval of special events request from Kinston Strong, movie in the park, Chief.
All right, this is my final one of the night, I hope.
All right.
So this will be taking place Friday, October, Friday, October 18th. So just right around the corner. It's going to be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It'll be at the New Sway Park. Also during that time, there'll be, there'll be some truck or treats going, going on at the same time. So we'll be out there. Does not require a road closure. It's a small event. This is not a fundraising project and alcohol will not be served there. And the home homeless agreement has been signed and the City of Kinston is listed as the insurance certificate holder. And again, we will be out there.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mr. Attorney, would you like to entertain? Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anything from the council relates to moving to park, special event permit? All right, hearing now, seeing now, item number seven, East Kinston Neighborhood Hub, Zora Davis, Kinston Teens Incorporated. All right, Ms. Davis, whenever you're ready, you can proceed.
Hello, everyone. Um, hello, mayor and city council members and community members. My name is Zora Davis. I am the Communications Manager with Kinston Teens. I've been full-time with the organization for about a year and a half now. But I interned 2022. Today, I'm just going to present about our plans for the East Kinston Neighborhood Hub and some of the other equitable development programs Kinston Teens, our neighbors and partners have been working on. So Kinston Teens, if you don't know, is a youth-led nonprofit organization founded in 2014 with the mission to empower young people through service, leadership and civic engagement. This year, we are celebrating ten years of service and impact to the community. We focus on addressing critical issues such as community revitalization, environmental, environmental justice and youth leadership development, particularly in East Kinston and surrounding areas. Kinston Teens is dedicated to creating opportunities for young people to actively participate in shaping the community from transforming vacant properties into public spaces to leading voter, voter engagement initiatives and responding to natural disasters. A key initiative of Kinston Teens is the development of the East Kinston Neighborhood Hub, a community-driven project designed to provide essential services, including educational programs, food, food security efforts and resilience building. Currently, the Neighborhood Hub is a renovated home on Tower Hill Road that we turned from a vacant and abandoned house into a community outreach center for our organization. At the hub, we have a community pantry, host meetings and events, serve meals to our community. In the past, provided testing and vaccination services and have partnered with a lot of different groups to offer programs and resources. As you can see, the pictures on the slide are just a before and after of the, of where Kinston Teens started with the hub in 2018 and where we are now. As our organization grew and the level of impact we were having on the community expanded, we very quickly started outgrowing our space at the Neighborhood Hub. We reached out to the award-winning team at Design Workshop, a landscape architecture firm based in Raleigh, to help us imagine what a new and larger facility could look like for our organization. Over the course of the last year and a half, we've undergone a planning process to imagine this new space. At the same time, we started visioning what other equitable development projects could look like for East Kinston. This process was led by Kinston Teens and driven by East Kinston neighbors, partners and stakeholders. We've been using the term equitable development a lot, and I want to share what that actually means. As city council members, you're all probably familiar with the terms, community development and economic development. We believe that equitable, equitable development is a combination of both that provides opportunities for all residents regardless of their income or demographics. We see equitable development as an opportunity to lift our neighborhood by eliminating barriers, increasing access to resources and making investments that spark positive change. When we set out to create a community-driven plan for East Kinston, we wanted to assure that it was rooted in a vision built not just by Kinston Teens, by our neighbors in East Kinston. There are a number of different challenges faced by the community in East Kinston, poverty, flooding and trauma from violence. We knew this process had to be led by the people most affected, the people most affected. We knew this process had to be led by the people most affected, the residents of East Kinston. Our journey began with a project kickoff meeting that brought together core stakeholders, local residents, community organizations, faith leaders, and we also invited local government officials. This meeting set the tone for our collaborative approach, and we continued that approach throughout the entire process. We conducted a community survey both online through door-to-door canvassing and by making printed copies available throughout the city. We had focus group meetings on specific issues like food, safety, housing, and programming. We hosted a big block party last October to allow neighborhood residents to see in person what the hub could look like and provide input on how the facility should be designed. We kicked off our monthly community meetings in December of last year with engaging, with an engaging conversation around community trauma and healing. And we've continued to host monthly dinners and community meetings to keep our neighbors engaged. This is a picture from our block party last October. This wasn't just a celebration, but a pivotal moment in the project. Hundreds of neighbors and, sorry, hundreds of neighborhood residents and community members attended, offering feedback on the plans for the future and helping shape the vision for what's to come. The work didn't stop there. We've continued to host monthly neighborhood meetings, Sunday dinners, and smaller focus groups to keep the momentum going. These gatherings serve as an ongoing platform for residents to stay engaged, share updates, and remain at the forefront of decision-making. To the moment you have all been waiting for, what exactly is the new East Kinston Neighborhood Hub? We see the hub itself as a dynamic, multipurpose facility offering a wide range of programming possibilities. We see game nights, educational workshops, and a commercial kitchen designed for food business startups or serving meals during disasters. We see an outdoor garden and play area for community members to enjoy, and a rooftop patio that will offer beautiful views and a green roof for sustainability. We see coworking spaces that will foster entrepreneurship and collaboration. And we also see this building as having reservable spaces for family reunions, birthday parties, and community meetings. The East Kinston Neighborhood Hub is more than a physical space. It's a vibrant hub for building community, capacity, and hope in East Kinston, and I hope you all see that too. A key feature of the hub is its design as a resilience hub. A resilience hub is a community-centered space equipped with resources, services, and programming designed to enhance the resilience and well-being of individuals and neighborhoods. This is both on a regular day-to-day basis and during times of crisis and disasters. On regular blue-sky days, a day like today, the hub will offer various services, activities, and programs that foster growth and connection within the community. Things like a community dinner, after-school tutoring, fitness classes, or cooking classes. But when disaster strikes on dark-sky days, the hub will pivot to serve as a critical resource for neighborhood resilience. It will be a space where neighbors can find shelter, access food and essential supplies, or receive vital information and services in times of crisis. We've really focused on the concept of resilience and what that means for our community. We want the people who come to the hub to leave just as strong and resilient as the facility itself. They have a quiet place to meditate, or a new environment to work the earth and participate in a garden. There will be art and storytelling, whether through murals, music, or cultural programming, that will allow the community to celebrate its heritage, will be able to talk about our issues, and build, learn, heal, and grow together. Again, we've really emphasized on making this a strong and resilient facility. In terms of outer resilience, we see this project helping to improve the clean air and tree canopy of East Kinston by planting native trees around the site, having stormwater and drainage wells to reduce flooding, but also having water collection systems in place so that we can reuse rainwater to nurture the environment. Our biggest resilience component is the inclusion of solar panels and battery storage. In the event of a disaster or power outage, this facility will be equipped with solar so that our programs and resources can continue to make an impact and offer relief to the community. And here is, uh, a rendering of the outside of the hub potentially. Um, in every way, this hub will reflect the power and potential of East Kinston. A place where resilience is built from the inside out and where the community has the tools and space to shape its own future. We see the space as a lively hub of activity, a vibrant beacon of light for the community. This is an example of some of the things you could see on a typical weeknight at the hub. People enjoying the shade on the front porch, a block party taking place on the side street with food trucks and music, or a networking event on the rooftop. This shows a Saturday at the outdoor pavilion. It might have a farmer's market or a vendor event going on. People enjoying the splash pad or just hanging out on the lawn. In the garden and play zone, you might see kids, someone gardening, a family using the grills for a cookout, or a basketball game going on. We see this as a lively space, not just for our organization, but for the entire community. Over the course of this process, neighbors shared their vision for an East Kinston that is restored, resilient, healthy, and self-sustaining. As a part of our plan, we developed concrete steps in addition to the hub that can bring that vision to life. Throughout the engagement process, the community developed six goals. High-quality housing addresses East Kinston's shortage of high-quality, affordable housing by combating blight, enforcing code violations, and providing diverse housing options and homeownership support. Community healing addresses collective traumas by providing opportunities for residents to process shared experiences while seeking to build strong social bonds, mutual, mutual support, and sustainable development. Climate justice addresses historical environmental inequities and reframes resilience efforts to bounce forward rather than merely recover from hurricanes and flooding. Safe and accessible transportation focuses on community-led transportation programs that allow residents to access all that Kinston and Lenore County has to offer, and also has action items around making our roadways and sidewalks safer for both pedestrians and motorists. Food security addresses East Kinston's status as a food desert by improving access to fresh, healthy food for residents. Lastly, entrepreneurship and economic empowerment focuses on revitalizing East Kinston's local economy by rebuilding the commercial landscape and improving connectivity with downtown and other commercial hubs. We know that we can't do all of this alone and we don't want to do it alone. We see ourselves as not just having a building called the hub, but being a hub organization to help bring people together to get things done in East Kinston. These are some of the partners that we have worked with from the beginning and others we hope will be involved moving forward. Some examples include the city of Kinston, the Cooperative Extension, Kinston Housing Authority, Kinston Community Health Center, and local churches. Here is what one page of our full-plan document looks like around food security. Some of the action items include forming a food assistance working group to help identify food resources, creating a food forest trail, which is an opportunity, opportunity for fruit trees to be planted throughout the neighborhood, and result recruiting a grocery store to the MLK quarter. Also included in our full-plan document are tables that include a possible timeline of getting these things done, potential funding opportunities to help pay for them, and what key partners may need to be involved. As a part of this process, to show that we care, sorry, to show the care that we have for our community and to make sure we're growing at a pace that we can maintain, we also underwent a strategic vision plan for our organization. This isn't completely relevant tonight, but we wanted to be able to demonstrate to the community and ourselves that we're building the capacity to really bring life to these plans. The last ten years of Kinston Teens have been our episode one, building a strong organizational foundation and laying the groundwork for future growth. Our next episode, what we're currently in, includes growing our staff and partnerships to diversify impact of our organization and expand our reach. Our third episode, Once the Hub Is Completed, will be collectively bringing forth the community vision for a vibrant, resilient, and restored East Kinston. Before I close this out, here's a quote that someone submitted on our community survey last fall. "One person or entity cannot be everything to everyone, but if an army of support can be built that is committed to being the change they wanna see, the impossible can occur." In conclusion, we're very excited to have had the opportunity to share with everyone our plans for the future East Kinston Neighborhood Hub. We're pursuing a few different funding opportunities to make this project possible, including the EPA Community Change Grant that we initiated the partnership with the city for. We were very excited when the Kinston Community Health Center reached out to us about joining them as part of the development efforts and appreciate the city's support in helping us identify a place and way to make this vision possible over there. If you wanna stay connected, we have an entire website, um, dedicated to this. It's eastkinston.org. Um, and the next slide may or may not have a Q R code on it. If not, eastkinston.org, if I have some more information there.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis, and, uh, Ms. Suggs. Any questions or concerns from the council as it relates to, uh, Kinston Neighborhood?
Ms. Davis, how, how big is the facility you guys are anticipating? And how much land or how many acreage do you think you're gonna need for the facility?
Fifteen thousand square feet. Um, in terms of acreage, I am not sure. Closer to two acres.
Any further discussion from the council, uh, as it relates to?
Yeah, you, you talked about, uh, employment. How many people y'all are planning on employing, um, if this project goes through?
As many as possible. This is really a project that we think the community could benefit from, and we will absolutely, like, be glad to bring them on in any way we can, truly.
Ms. Davis, last question. I know you said you guys are applying for the EPA grant, so are you, uh, trying to secure any other funding in case the grant does not, or we don't qualify for the grant? Are there other resources that you guys are looking at to continue this, this vision?
We absolutely have secured some other funding, some additional funding. Um, the bulk of the funding, um, we are expecting full delivery on the EPA grant. Um, but if that doesn't work, we're not gonna fail on pursuing this project in it to continue. We do have other funding already lined up to, eh, expand what the EPA portion of the funding won't cover already. So we are securing funding consistently.
And, and the reason I ask the question because I know the Kinston Community Health Center had a vision of doing what they wanted to do. And then with the crisis, with the financial stuff going on, I didn't know if you guys had a backup plan. I know the Community Health Center has been going through some obstacles and trying to get to their, their point of turning some dirt. So I just want you guys to have a good foot forward going forward, so.
I do appreciate that, and I think that one of the most pivotal points right, um, na- at this point would be, um, being able to submit that grant and we go from there. But definitely, there was definitely true momentum going, and there is funds already secured once that grant hits that we can announce some other funding that's been promised to us.
When's the deadline to have that grant submitted?
Yesterday. Um, um, and I'm not being facetious with that. We had anticipated submitting that grant early on because there was a, an opportunity for feedback, official feedback. Um, so the sooner the better, because the sooner you get the application submitted, the, the better your opportunity is to get some, some feedback that would allow you to submit it before final deadline. So, um, when I say yesterday, I, I say it with all sincerity that we are really at a point that it needs to be submitted.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Suggs. Any further questions or discussion as it relates to the East Neighborhood Hub? Right, hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to item number eight. Consider approval of a resolution EPA Community Change Grant. Uh, Madam, run the board.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a reminder to the audience, and during the July sixteenth city council meeting, the city council passed a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with Kinston Teens and authorize the city manager to apply for the EPA Community Change Grant for an amount not to exceed twenty million since this time. Uh, staff, myself, Ms. Blunt, Mr. Miller, have been working, working continuously with the team from Hometown Strong's and Kinston Teens, uh, and the executive director of Kinston Teens to complete the grant application. As part of the application, we must identify the site of the East Kinston Neighborhood Hub. But as you've heard, we're not quite ready to, to pick the site out yet, uh, but we wanna submit the grant. So what you have before you tonight is a resolution for the city council, um, regarding the sites that you own in the area. And a commitment-
This is the revised one that we got?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
We're waiting for it.
Right, you have a revised one in front of you. In your package, you had, uh, one that we had last week. But since that time, Mr. Colley has reviewed it, made some changes, uh, re- removed a couple of paragraphs that might have been redone. It said, um, not a whole lot of changes, but I hope you've had a chance to read through it. Um, and really what the council will be doing is considering the conveyance of parcels that you have in that area of the old church factory, um, that would be considered. And we're hoping that including this resolution with the grant application will satisfy that need to identify the site.
Any questions from the council as it pertains to the, uh, revised, um, resolution as it relates to Kinston?
Mayor, I, I would like to take removal parcel eight-two-eight-eight. I thought that was always reserved for the Community Health Center. And then I had a question for Ms. Blunt.
All right, so the question is, uh, parcel eighty-two-eight-eight, and you had a question for Director Blunt. I guess we can start with the question from, uh, Director Blunt and then look at, uh, removing eight-eight-two-eight-eight, uh, afterwards. Madam Director Blunt, if you would entertain, Mr. Swenson, what's your question?
Ms. Blunt, on the map that's here in our, um, package on Caswell Street, those parcels, they on Caswell, would that allow them to have enough space for their square footage and the acreage?
Um, the last understanding I had was it about an acre that they were designing. I understand now it's about two acres. So there's a combination of lands that couldn't at least, um, equal to an acre. Then it'd have to be some combinations of another, some other properties that could equal to maybe two acres. But they won't be all combined together. They won't be like next to each other. They'll be in the same vicinity of city-owned properties, but not next to each other.
Mr. Swenson, would, would you like Ms. Suggs to, to read, to talk more about the space?
Yeah.
Um, my response to that is, as a standalone property, because of the parking and, um, the lack of street parking in that vicinity, that was the reason why I responded with the two, up, up to two acres. Um, the acreage for parking, if it was in collaboration with other organizations or facilities, there would be a lot of overshared, shared par- um, shared parking spaces. But we do have to consider with the size of that facility, um, the parking, um, allotments and allocations. But the acreage for the facility itself, but then the other was, was for parking.
With that being in mind, then yes, they definitely have, you could combine some parcels to get the acre. And then because of the ordinance, you can allow satellite parking. So if it's within a certain amount of feet, they can also have that satellite parking that may be a combination of other parcels that are still within that vicinity, and that could equate to both the desired amount of acres that they need.
And, and that brings a question, uh, I had in mind, uh, with the Community Health Center. Uh, would they have, uh, with the, uh, facilities they plan to put up, do they have the, uh, necessary, uh, parking? And I, I see somebody back there nodding their head, so if you could address that for me, I appreciate it.
All right. If you would step to the mic, I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Kenzie.
So the audience can hear to them.
Yes, uh, I do, for, for the record. I just need a microphone.
Uh, yes, Councilman Hari, we would, and apologies for not coming to the council sooner, but, uh, we did have conversations with the city manager, uh, back in April and with Marcia. So we have been getting plans together and actually invited, uh, uh, started conversations with Kinston Teens back in July to see if we could, uh, all be on the same property together, um, uh, you know, to offer some more resources to our community. But the parking, what we're looking at is going to be a lot more than what we have now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. I believe also, I will state it, as it relates to parking in the inner piece of the parcel, uh, .mlk, the church factory, it was gonna be parking internally and around, uh, a different type of, uh, you know, what they had going on, so I said it was enough, um, stated from the conversation we had on the meeting too as well. All right. Any further discussion as it relates to?
And just to make sure I didn't mislead, the, um, the resolution just lists the properties that we have in the area. It doesn't pick any particular property that's to be done by the council and, uh, Kinston Teens later.
So I would just say, Ms. Kenzie, thank you, um, for coming, um, and being able to be a voice for, um, the Community Health Center. Um, and that voice had been missing for a year because we knew you guys were working on securing the funding. Um, and so it wasn't until recently, um, that we found, you know, found out about, um, the joint, the joint venture, so we thank you for that. Um, and, um, it was, it's been sent- Um, and, um, it was, it's been since April that these conversations started. Um, so we thank you for that, um, because we were wondering where we were with the, the whole discussion of the, um, the Community Health Center. And so considering we hadn't had an update, um, since, I guess it was what, a year ago? So, yeah, so thank you, um, for sharing that because once again, there hadn't been an update and just hearing now that the conversations were being held, so we, we appreciate that.
And thank you for that. And we were just so excited when things were going to happen and, you know, and capital grants and our, the capital increased and, and change of leadership and things like that. But we didn't want to come empty-handed. So, and we wanted to make sure we had our Ps and Qs together before we came and presented to you again.
Mm-hmm. And so, so while we're on the conversation, so you, so the, the health center has the funding? Okay, and so-
There will be a couple of asks from the city. I don't, um, I'm not prepared to-
Right, I understand.
Um, I don't have my team with me, uh, but there, there will be a couple of asks, um, and, but yes.
Mm-hmm. And so-
The last time we came, we came to you, um, to express our concerns was actually, we were looking at a, a million dollar a year, uh, you know, lease or rent, you know, for the property and so it really set us back. But we have, we stepped back and have had some other council, um, you know, we're working with, so we, to get everything together.
Mm-hmm.
So we're hoping to present to you hopefully next month.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kenzie.
Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. And I do appreciate the, uh, we did have an opportunity, uh, on that call, the Zoom call that we had. It was partially, uh, council members there, um, to discuss the actual plan. And then we had conversation, uh, you know, later on as it relates to what, what the plan is going to look like moving forward. But the discussion was, uh, you know, what does it look like in the future? Is there a presentation that's going to be had here at the city council or the council meeting? And we do look forward to that, uh, probably to, to streamline and actually cut out some of those questions that folks are, are asking about, you know, as it relates to what it look like on the site.
But Ms. Kenzie, I, on the Zoom meeting, we did talk and I would just want to ask, has there been any more conversation with the possibility of the grocery store? Or have we heard anything back from that part of-
Three thirty partners, um, this is, the grocery store is actually, um, on the west coast, but they're looking to expand especially in underserved communities to, uh, North Carolina and South Carolina. So their conversations are being had with them and that would be, you know, placing them in the same, uh, parcel as the shirt factory. Giving out, you know, providing access to food in the food desert that we have here.
And so those, so did those conversations start back in the spring?
No, they did not.
Mm-hmm.
Actually just started happening probably about a month ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we, we got Marcia back in on conversations. Um, so she has helped us with it and provided a lot of guidance, um, so yeah. This is, this, this, uh, is actually what community health centers in different parts of the country are doing. Because the community health centers, like everyone else, are fi, you know, they're facing budget restraints. But they're needing to expand, like our services, our dental services, we have a waitlist of four months. Uh, medical and OB-GYN are behind. And that's all the community health centers. So what they're doing is trying to make a, uh, resource with grocery, with, um, community hubs like Kinstantheens wants to do, the Kinston Community Health Center, even being close to the health department. So we've all, you know, we're, we've been having the conversations-
Centralized.
Partners, we're going to be involved ready. I'm, I'm excited. I wish I could present to you tonight, but it's going to be very promising, especially for not only the city as a whole, but of the east side of Kinston.
Absolutely. And so, and your team is, is coming forward with the presentations, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. Uh, Councilwoman C four.
Yes, um, Ms. Kenzie, which parcels of land would the, uh, Kinston Community Center be, uh, built on?
The old shirt factory.
The eight two eight.
Eight two eight.
Eighty-eight.
Eight two eighty-eight?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Blunt, with the grocery store being added to this, are we going to have to do rezoning for that parcel or to add them to, to the lot for the proposal?
Well, if you recall, the current zoning was rezoned for the health center for office and institutional. So as it stands right now, grocery store is not permitted, but that can be amended with the text amendment.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Director Blunt. Any further, further questions from the council as it pertains to, um, the site? Thank you, Ms. Kenzie.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, uh, so for the sake of clarity, the, the initial resolution that we had with the Community Health Center, this, does this, does this trump our original agreement? We, with, because like we, okay, with the consideration of a putting of three organizations, does it, because the, the initial resolution is upon the receipt of, of their funding, then we deed the old shirt factory property to Kinston Community Health Center. That, that, that was that original agreement.
Donation agreement.
Well, yeah, we, we donate that, the property to Community Health Center. So my question is, is it that once the land is, once the land is donated, which was upon their receipt of the funding, and if I, if I'm hearing right, that funding is pretty much looking secured? Not as much as initially, but the funding to move forward, it is secured. Will the, the grocery store and the hub, will they go in under? Yeah, right. I I guess my question is, what, where do we stand, stand with our existing resolution with the Community Health Center? And that we have one-
Ms. Sam, that's why I asked if we would remove parcel eighty-two eighty-eight. Ask the question on the East Casual, so we're looking at swapping or letting them go in the back of Casual Street behind the hub, behind Kinston Community Health Center. Yeah. So the Community Health Center will still be on the corner of MLK like we had always envisioned and the grocery store somewhere close there, but all three would be walking accessible.
Mm-hmm.
But they just wouldn't be, be all on the same track of lane.
That's, uh, that's the way to put it, trap a lane, that's good. The, uh, and I'm tracking, uh, so, so the question now is your second question is, uh, eighty-two eighty-eight parcel removed from the revised resolution, right? Um, so having said that, uh, would the council like to entertain, uh? All right. So under consent agenda, um, and we'll discuss that, I guess, under consent as, as the removal of eighty-two eighty-eight. Uh, is that the consensus, uh, of the entire council? All right.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution with, with the removal of parcel eighty-two eighty-eight known as Kinston Shirt Factory site and we'll help them find another location close in proximity.
Right, a clerk, uh, I know we're under items for discussion, uh, but we want to entertain a motion to, uh, remove parcel eighty-two eighty-eight. Um, that motion is on the floor from the resolution, revised resolution. Is there a second?
Second?
Some would have probably second. Some would have probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Here now and seeing that all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries? May Hardy, will you let the record reflect my written recusal from this matter? Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, rec, written recusal, written recusal, uh, on the record for item, uh, number seven and, uh, I number eight. Um, let it reflect, yeah. But, and I, on a point of order for this matter, this was an action, this was an action agenda item. It was a consent agenda item, we're in the work session. Are you all adding this to the action agenda and then making any changes there? That's what we're going to have to do because absolutely, uh, Madam Clerk. That, that's why I made that statement as it relates to, uh, the motion, uh, being moved and the items for discussion under work session. We'll take, we'll just move it under, uh, action. Absolutely. Um, all right. So having said that, we'll move on to item number nine. Scott, uh, Director Scott Austin, the MOF project update.
Thanks, Council. I'm, I'm here to just give you a brief, brief update on where we're at with the MOF project. Um, have a few slides here for you. Um, here's, our, our timeline has been updated. Um, this week, we're actually starting construction of the playground, um, with Playtime Installers that, that we approved a while back. Uh, we should see that playground finished in about two to three weeks. Um, so we, you should see some groundbreaking and movement there. Um, uh, and you should see about six weeks here from now. You should see the splash pad, uh, you know, start construction there, um, by Playtime Installers as well. So go. Um, as you can see, the, the walking track, um, the brick walking track in front of the, uh, the gymnastics center is finished. Um, it, it looks great. Um, if you hadn't had a chance, get out there and beautiful day and, and get through and walk. Um, and this area right here is where the playground is going to be. So if you look at the middle of it, the playground will be accessible by the, in the middle of it. So parents can walk around and, and, and get their exercise while the kids play in the middle. And feel free to ask me any questions, um, while I'm going through this. Um, the splash pad, you can see the splash pad, uh, by the building right there. It's actually going to be right in front of the, the old, uh, locker room door right there. And it's going to go look down toward the hill. Um, and this hill is sloped and you can see it was all dirt. It's all irrigated grass. It's got irrigation in there. Um, so our, our guys on their own did that, um, did that work themselves, our grass crew. Uh, you can see, uh, our basketball court. I was out there the other day and one of our, my former players at, at Fairfield was out there shooting, uh, his name's Eric. But, uh, it's already being used on one side, so as soon as we get the, the fence up, uh, hopefully, um, you know, after the splash pad will be open the other side up as well. Um, our amphitheater along, like I said, it's, grass has come in well. Um, and that'll be toward the last part of the project. Um, and that'll be, if you look to your left, toward the ditch, that's where the, um, the actual, um, uh, amphitheater will be. And we'll have an on and on there and a pad, so that'll fit right in. And the bath house building, um, we're looking at ways, um, preferably at the end to update this, this part because this will be the only part that wasn't included in the project. Um, and hopefully we'll have some monies left over and we'll be able to kind of do a, a, a facelift of this project to this group. So when they're using the bathroom, it's, it's kind of got a little facelift. Uh, but as you see, it does need, need some paint. And stream repair, we did Hurricane Helene, uh, did some damage, um, at the park. Uh, we've replaced our crews, replaced the brick, uh, not the brick, well, we did have some washout. Um, actually, if you see the top of the pipe, the water came all the way to the top of the pipe, uh, when it was coming through on those rains. So, uh, it's, it's, it's been, uh, our crew did a great job of getting that fixed. And our, our timeline, kind of an updated timeline, um, our opening of park and ceremony, we're looking at March two thousand twenty-five. Um, and our splash pad, uh, we're looking at Memorial Day weekend, uh, to coincide with other splash pads. Um, and we're hoping to set on schedule, but you never know what'll, uh, transpire, um, what problems we run into. But that's kind of where, where we're going and kind of where we're at with that one. And, uh, any questions on, on that, feel free to ask.
Scott, not a question but a comment. I hope and pray that the bath house is really up to the par. Cause after we did all the work at Holloway and had a ribbon cutting and we went there, we were totally disappointed with how the bathrooms looked there and we don't want that same happening at MOF for this new facility that we spending all this money in.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at different, uh, vendors to do that. So we're looking at o, other, um, contractors as well. So we're hoping to get that, hoping to have a nice finish on that as well.
Uh, one thing, Scott, real quick, uh, just want to thank you and your crew for, uh, getting, staying on this project. Y'all have really been doing a great job. I've been going out every now and then, looking at the guys out there working and, and working hard and getting this thing taken care of and we appreciate it.
Yeah, we, our, our maintenance crew has done a great job of, of keeping an eye on things and, and, uh, they, they've stayed on it with all the other things they've got going on. We, we commend them.
Scott, thank you, um, for being on, on top of this, um, project, um, because the actual, the baton was passed to you.
Yes, ma'am.
And we thank you for this. Um, are, is there still talks about, you know, initially there was a conversation about, um, having some of the artists from Smart Kinston paint the, um, basketball courts, that, that blacktop? Is that, has that been a, a part of the conversation?
We, we've had some conversations and, and we've actually looked at, um, and maybe some, some murals on a building and, and doing that kind of thing because that, that building needs some work. Um, so we've talked with them a little bit. So I, I think that's in the stage toward the spring, uh, when we get ready to open up. So I, I, I think we've been very open and, and we've talked with them. We hadn't had any deep conversations, but that's something I think once the splash pads, all that is cleared out, we'll probably talk with them in detail, uh, Sandy and, and, and all that crowd, so, but we're very open to it.
Um, considering that amphitheater was the biggest sale, um, when that work was being done, are you able to guarantee us that that funding is going to be there? If that's, if this is at the end of this project, can, can we be guaranteed that that funding for that amphitheater is going to be there?
Yeah, the amphitheater will be there as part of our initial scope. Um, we actually, um, looking at, at ways, we found a, a structure that, that looks real nice, that, that's going to go on top of the amphitheater. Uh, we had, we actually have that in storage, um, so we, we think that'll be a good addition. So it not only will be a concrete pad, it'll have a, a, a roof and a, and a shelter over it that, that fits right well. It'll look really well, so it, it's part of our scope, so we, we definitely have it part of it, so. And we think it'll be a good addition, uh, the looks of it, it'll, it'll dress it up, the, the new addition, top to it.
Thank you, Scott. I do appreciate you and, uh, your efforts and your entire team and all those that came out initially to, uh, figure out what exactly we want to look like at the destination park at MOF. So thank you so very much and I look forward to what is to come. Um, any further discussion from the council as it relates to, uh, project at MOF Park? All right, here now and seeing that, moving on to item number ten. Consider approval of Granger Stadium scoreboard replacement, conversation, um, surrounding the Granger Stadium scoreboard replacement. Director Scott Austin.
Thank you, Council. Um, I'm here today, um, requesting the award of the Granger Stadium scoreboard replacement project, um, to Daktronics for the amount of six hundred thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars before taxes. Um, as you see in your packet, Daktronics is a trusted name in the athletics business and it has a highly proven track record. Um, it currently, uh, Granger Stadium has a Daktronic scoreboard. It has been in use since around two thousand four, two thousand five. Uh, we've had great, um, luck with it. Um, it is, it has lasted as well. And anytime we've had any service calls, it has been, um, it has been handled quickly and efficiently. Um, we did have other bids, uh, including Watchfire, which was a very competitive bid. Um, but it, it doesn't have the, the notoriety and the, uh, service aspect, uh, in our local area that Daktronics has. Daktronics has numerous scoreboards and, and I've brought some pictures as well. Um, Fayetteville Woodpeckers, Hickory Crawdads, Greensboro Grasshoppers and Gastonia are just a few. So we're looking at multiple scoreboards in our area. Um, and it, it speaks for itself. They're, uh, they're very reliable. And if we have a game, um, I would just give one instance. We had, um, I think it was last year during the Freedom Classic, one, just some board went out, uh, part of our computer and we sent it off in a week. It came back and we were able to, to, to have, uh, end out with scoreboard is almost twenty years old. So, um, you know, great recommendations and although Watchfire was great, great price and, and on paper, there's not many, I think within a tri-state area, there's, there's hard, very few scoreboards that are that size, um, in our area. And, uh, none, and none that we, that we know in North Carolina. So that, that's why we've, we've come to, uh, the conclusion of DAC is, is the one. And, um, you know, that we highly recommend it. Um, and I do have a few pictures of, of a rendering. This is, is the Hickory scoreboard, if you can see, it's kind of small. Um, and then here's the one in High Point Rockers. Uh, Greensboro Grasshoppers, just to name a few. And the Fayetteville Woodpeckers. I've seen this one in person, uh, me and former Councilman Sammy Aiken rode, rode down a few years ago and saw this one. And it was, it was a very, it was a huge bore. And it was, it was, uh, very, it, it was a huge bore. And Gastonia Honey Hunters. And those, those are just a few that we've seen. So those are our recommendations. Any questions from the council?
Uh, thank you, Scott. I just, I do appreciate your efforts and, and doing your research there. Also, I have folks I've spoken to as, as it relates to Daktronics, uh, which is a reputable, uh, organization that actually respond all, all the time for the most part. And, and they actually have a, a footprint in, in our state. So we, we look forward to, uh, hopefully, uh, accepting that bid. Uh, go ahead.
Sorry, one, one more thing, and, and I, I didn't bring the rendering, but the rendering will put it in left field. So at the Mother Pavilion, if you're sitting in the Mother Pavilion, you won't have to turn your head. It'll be straight in front of you on the left. So, um, these scoreboards will be right there and, and the sun will not be a factor in this as well. Cause I know that's been a big factor in the scoreboard we have now with late day, late game, sun's hitting it. Um, so it'll be viewable. We don't have to do any other TVs or access to the Mother Pavilion or on that side of the stadium.
So they honestly move it. Yeah, I've heard that come up several times. Absolutely. Okay, that's, that's really good.
And the sound is also included. So we will have a new sound system in this as well.
Alright, so. So thank you, Scott. Anything from the council that relates to the scoreboard piece? Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to item number eleven. Consider approval of the Opera Fund's final project closeout allocation. Ms. Goodson.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet, you have, um, a narrative regarding the American Rescue Plan, our Opera Funds, which was Project C twenty-nine oh eight. Um, back in two thousand twenty-one, we, um, the, the city was awarded and we received funding in the amount of six million three hundred eighty-seven thousand and fifteen dollars. We have obligated all but seven thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-three cents of the funds. And we, we are required to obligate and expend all the funds, or obligate all the funds by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, we had, we did, um, we did obligate all the funds in the, and, um, back in September of, excuse me, in, in, I'm getting my dates wrong. We have obligated all the funds by, because we, um, we obligated and expended by, by letting the standard allowance. And on April twentieth, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, we elected to take the standard allowance. However, to completely satisfy the December thirty-fourth first, two thousand twenty-four deadline, the remaining seven thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars would need to be earmarked for a general governmental service or in some addition to the funds approved for the MOF Part F project. In that fund, we also have accumulated interest in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred eight dollars and twenty-three cents as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. There will be a small amount of interest allocated for the first quarter of, um, ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. That's not been determined yet. Um, according to our Director of Parks and Recreation, we do have, um, a, a project that I think that this money would certainly help satisfy, and that is the ba- the bath house facility at MOF. Um, he has looked at a cost of around twenty-five thousand dollars to replace the roof of the bath house. And also, just as a point of consideration, there are requirements, um, for a restroom facility to be usable within a certain parameter of the splash pad. So I think, um, at this time, it's a good opportunity for us to put these funds to use and to, um, fund the, the roof of the, of the bath house. So that's, that's my recommendation. You can certainly use it for other opportunities, but it just seemed like a good, a good way to finish this project out.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Goodson, as it relates to that, that seven thousand, uh, that need to be obligated. And I understand December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four is the deadline that we need to have it obligated. And twenty, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six is the time we have to have it expended.
True.
Alright, so, uh, I'm tracking on that. Um, if anything from the council, anybody would like to interject as it relates to the seven thousand dollars, um, however, to be obligated to the Parks and Rec for that, uh, roofing?
And the accrued interest.
And the accrued interest.
That, and that would, that, by doing that, we'd be able to close the project out finally also.
Alright, so that would clear everything out.
Yes, and if you approve that, then we'll, we'll come back with a, um, project amendment to show the full amount being transferred over to the general fund and then to the, to the grant itself.
Thank you much. And that'll be the rules from the, uh, Secretary Yellen, uh, US Department.
Yes.
Alright, um, anything from the council as it relates to the, uh, the seven thousand dollars and the accrued interest as it relates to the opera dollars to be obligated, um, moving forward? Is there any discussion that surrounds that synergy? Anything from the council? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Goodson. Alright, at this moment, we will go to a five-minute recess. Correction, no we won't. No we won't. Director Blunt, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make this real quick.
Absolutely.
Um, this is a request to purchase city-owned property. This request was tabled from the last council meeting in order to receive information on the intent of the purchase. This request was submitted by Mr. Danny Webb. In order to purchase, the property is located at two-two-nine South Queen Street. The property is owned B-two, central business, and is approximately zero point two acres in size. The property is valued at six thousand dollars. And then included in your package was a letter from Mr. Webb stating that the intent is just to expand existing parking with the potential of future development. The original offer to purchase is fifteen hundred and the applicant did state, should you, um, accept this offer, he is ready to move forward immediately. Counsel has the option to do a private sale or start the upset bid process.
Thank you, Ms. Goodson. Any discussion from the council as it relates to the, uh, the rezoning of the property, RA twelve residential? Uh, purchase, the purchase.
Yes.
Or the purchase of the property at fifteen hundred dollars. Um, any, any questions, um, that surround that from the council? Alright. Alright, Ms. Blunt, we'll move on to, uh, consider.
Well, is it, is it under action agenda?
It, it's, we'll come back and do the, uh,
You need this added to the action.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, we're gonna add this item twelve to the, uh, action and it's gonna be required in a public hearing. Not, not here, just a decision.
Right.
Alright, alright. Okay, alright. Do you wanna discuss that, uh, right now, uh, Ms. Blunt?
Counsel so desires.
Uh, Counsel, if you would, uh, let's get this discussion, uh, out, uh, now as it relates to this, um, fifteen hundred dollar purchase of this property or this parcel. Any questions or concerns that relates to it?
No, Mr. Mayor. I'm just grateful that, uh, that we have followed up and asked people that purchased property to give us an idea what they're gonna do with it. Because this has been an ongoing issue with the council. And, um, if we don't, uh, get this information, it's hard for us to release property to people. Because people purchase property from the city, find out that they're not, uh, in the right type of zone to do what they wanna do. And then, um, they wanna, you know, I just ask people to do their research before they purchase property, so they know what they're doing. Know if it meets the needs that they needed to meet before they purchase the property. So they don't complain and say, well, y'all knew I couldn't do this before I purchased it. That's your job, if you're gonna buy a property, to do the research, to make sure to meet your needs. So I'm grateful that, uh, we was able to get that done with Mr. Webb. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Blunt, for my clarification, are you asking a direction from the council as to whether to proceed in this matter by upset bid or private sale negotiation? Is that what?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, uh, members of the council, what Ms. Blunt is asking for is, there've been communications from somebody about buying this property. So to follow statutory requirements for selling city-owned property, there are a couple of different ways that you can do that. In this process, it would either be through the upset bid process, where you advertise it for sale and you receive bids at a closed, you know, for a certain amount of time. Um, or you can direct Ms. Blunt to negotiate with this individual, um, and obtain the necessary offer and deposit in those matters. She can bring that back to you. It still may be posted for upset bid after that. But since she's already made communications with this individual, that may be the more expedient, expedient process. So, uh, what she's looking for is guidance on consensus to, uh, proceed with investigating the sale of property and how to do it by upset bid or private negotiation. Um, my recommendation to council will be through the private negotiation process. Um, still subject to upset bid later, but that would streamline, uh, a lot of, a lot of things we have going on here.
And this is, this is that, that property adjacent to, is it adjacent to the pub?
Yes.
So it's a vacant lot right now. Um, and yes, Mr. Webb does own several of those parcels already on the block.
Hmm, and easily to revitalize on South Queen Street.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
Had there been any communication with Mr. Webb since the last meeting? Because what Tim is suggesting now is what I suggested at the last meeting that we just.
It, it's the same. It was just to, to clarify the intent of the park, I mean, of the park. So that's, that's it.
But there had to be any communication around whether or not he would want to go through the negotiated sale or if he wanted to still do the upset bid process?
He wanted to offer the private, it was, his suggestion was the private sale, but council can still make that decision, right?
Okay.
And he has presented an offer that he is willing to pay for the parcel.
Okay. So is the council willing to accept the offer and the private sale?
I support that.
Alright.
Yes.
Having said that, that's a consensus, uh, type of, uh, yes.
Okay, and I will continue the process as, um, attorney has stated and go through that. Alright, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Director Blunt. Alright, having said that, um, we are gonna recess for five minutes, so I can actually put a, a mark here so we can, before we go into the actual meeting. Uh, call this meeting to recess to go to our regular scheduled meeting. We're gonna recess for five minutes. Alright. Call this city council meeting back to order, a regular scheduled meeting. Today's date, ten fifteen, twenty twenty-four, time, seven forty-three hours. First we'll have the prayer by Pastor Hood from Gather the Nation's Worship Center. If you would, come to my left of the podium, your right. And begin whenever you're ready. Pastor.
To the mayor and the council, I'm humbled to be here on tonight to pray for this great city. Sovereign Father, we thank you and we acknowledge your presence in this place. We now ask, oh God, that your ability and your grace would rest upon these leaders of this great city. We pray now for your protection over this city. And God, we just pray tonight that your wisdom would supersede human intellect and anything, oh God, that would exalt itself over your agenda. We thank you that everything would be carried out in peace and in love. I pray, Father, that you would protect every police officer. Oh God, all of the emergency servicemen and women that cover this city. Father, we thank you that your authority rests upon Kinston and that, oh God, Kinston belongs to you. It is in the matchless name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Alright, so what we're gonna do here is, we're gonna have the, uh, the Amazing Girl Scout Troop, Troop number two sixty-three, and they're gonna help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, United States of America. And they're gonna begin whenever they're ready, in the direction of their, uh, their troop leader. So whenever you're ready to begin, you begin, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. In the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So whenever you're ready. We're gonna do it. So, madam, um, if you would like to, whenever you're ready. Absolutely, yeah.
Their show.
Yeah.
Um, as Girl Scout Troop, um, as the Girl Scout Troop comes forward, this is actually their second time here. Um, the first time, I think we had two members of the group. Everyone was home with the flu at the time. So we're glad that they're, they're back. Um, but at, um, this moment, I think the mayor would like for them to give their names and then to share, um, about a special project that they have.
Desiree, Bailey, Tavaia, Ava, Emma, Coco. So our love for Western. We were able to collect and donate six Carlos of items to the Hugo Vaughn Tier Fire Department and Wheeler Exterminating, who are taking items to our neighbors in Western North Carolina. Our community knows us like to be impacted by hurricane and flooding. And we are grateful for the blessing to be able to assist, uh, our fellow North Carolinians in their time of need. Thank you.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll take a, a photo with, with all the Troop, Troop two sixty-three. If you would come right up front here and we can get a, get a photo. Um, and Scott, if you'd be the photographer for me today, again. Alright, Madam Clerk? Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Suggs. Councilmember Solomon.
Present.
Councilmember Seiforth.
Present.
And Mayor Prochem, Hardy.
Present.
All present on account of for Madam Clerk and the citizen comments. Do we have any?
Yes, sir.
Alright, under citizen comments, citizens must sign in before the start of the meeting if they wish to address the city council. Citizens should state their name and address before beginning their comments and may speak up for a maximum of three minutes. Citizens taking assistance or asking questions will be contacted by a member of the governing body or the appropriate city staff. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Outfield Simmons.
Alright, Ms. Simmons?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First, I would like to thank the mayor for issuing a proclamation declaring October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the city of Kinston. And as everybody know, as I stand here, a twenty-three-year survivor, this is something that's dear to my heart. And everyone who knows me also know that I give God all praise, all glory, all honor. It belongs to him. And my declaration this year is, I'm more than a conqueror. Last year, it was, I have faith. The year before, God got it. This year, I'm more than a conqueror. So I thank God for allowing me to stand here. But the reason I'm standing here, I'm looking, the reason why I'm standing here is on October the- I'm looking, the reason why I'm standing here is on October the twenty-fourth, the city of Kinston, we will kick off our annual breast cancer walk. The walk will begin here at eight thirty on October the twenty-fourth, and then at ten thirty, we will meet at the Public Services Complex and walk with the staff there. Also, after that walk on the twenty-fourth, the staff at the complex has, um, prepared bottomless bowl. That means all the soup you can get, this is all part of my fundraiser. It's not my fundraiser, it's the city of Kinston. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who have supported this. I'm quite sure all of us who's sitting here, we know of someone that this disease has, um, affected. But look at me, standing tall, still looking good. I speak it, I decree it, I declare it, and I know God got it. So please, I invite the public to come out on October the twenty-fourth, eight thirty here on the Independence Street side. We walk a mile around this building, again, October twenty-fourth, ten thirty, we're going to get our steps in down at the complex. So please, come and join me. Also, you see my little table out there? I'm taking some donations also. So there's some snacks out there, so there's a little box out there. All my funds go back to the American Cancer Society to help all those that are in need. So again, thank y'all so much for all of the sports. So many have supported me tremendously, and I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Uh, Madam Clerk, will there be any others?
Ms. Zora Davis.
Ms. Davis.
Try to use the mic this time. Hello, my name is Zora Davis, um, address three twenty-seven North Queen Street. By removing parcel eight-two-eight-eight, the former for Shirt Factory site from the resolution, it does not allow the Kinston Community Health Center, Kinston Teens, and the potential grocery store to come up with a full site plan for the area that would include the opportunity for shared parking, infrastructure, and amenities for the overall development. We understand that for whatever reason, the city does not want to see Kinston Teens on the Shirt Factory lot with the Community Health Center. We've also heard that some members of the council are opposed to subdividing the parcels in any way. We want to make it clear that Kinston Community Health Center invited Kinston Teens to be a part of this development with them and that the full scope of this project includes a grocery store. There are numerous benefits and significant value to these different partners being able to work together on a shared development in that area. It will save money on water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure. It will allow us to share parking, which would help reduce the amount of asphalt, excess heat, and impervious surfaces. And it will allow for the maximization of space of the different properties. We would like for the city to include eight-two-eight-eight in the actual resolution so that the designers, consultants, and planners that both Kinston Community Health Center and Kinston Teens have hired, as well as the city's professional planning staff and the council, so that we can come up with a site plan that is agreeable and workable for all partners, including our planned hub, the health center's new facility, and a grocery store. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Davis, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Crystal Suggs.
Ms. Suggs.
Crystal Suggs, thirteen oh-two Manchester Road, Kinston, North Carolina. When I was on the council a few years ago, we came really close to there being a potential grocery store on that parcel. It had been a long time plan of the city of Kinston to have a grocery store retailer there. We had issues concerning parking and, um, driveways, which was a barrier with the potential grocery that was interested or that had showed some interest in the site. Fast forward to now, I'd just like to reiterate how impactful it would be to have three facilities, two organizations, and a business structure with shared parking, shared driveways, shared usage. I also just want to add that if there is a specific reason, more specific reason, why Kinston Teens is not wished to be on that site, let's go ahead and talk about it, the sooner the better. Because this seems to be more personal than, than, than business. At the start of the, the, um, program here, Pastor Hood stood here and she, she declared that we were going to allow the movement to be real. And I just want to just express at this time that I personally would like to know what the personal reason is because it does not seem to be the professional best interest of the community.
Thank you, Ms. Suggs. Madam Clerk, would you have any others?
Ms. Candida Brown Gorham.
Ms. Gorham.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Candida Brown Gorham, and I live at four zero one Marcella Drive, Kinston, North Carolina. And, um, well, I am a, um, board member on the Kinston Teens, um, organization. And I'm really not understanding what the process is regarding, um, removing the lot or the old Shirt Factory lot, eighty-two eighty-eight. I'm, I don't understand, um, because the presentation that was included, even by the young lady who came here to represent, um, included Kinston Teens and the possibility of having, um, the grocery store. And, and that within just a few seconds, because I was, when I tell you I was confused, I was confused. Within a few seconds, all of that was removed. Now, I've been in the process of watching Kinston Teens, and I've been to the, um, organization where they had everybody come in. They had children that were in strollers, um, they had older, older people come in that was on walkers. All of them came to this neighborhood hub gathering, and they put down what they wanted. The people did not ask for anything outrageous, they just asked for an opportunity. And the opportunity is to get heard on what they want. It's not what we put out there. We didn't get together on the board and write out stuff that we wanted to do. The people in that neighborhood walked there with their children, with their grandparents. Elderly people came, people from all over came who had an investment in East Kinston and wrote on sticky notes, put down what they wanted. And all they're asking is opportunity to get heard. And just like you all asked for an opportunity by asking us to vote for you all to be here, we asking you to just listen to what we want, listen to what we want, that's it.
Thank you, uh, madam, um, Ms. Gorham. Madam Clerk, will there be any others?
Ms. Tanya Yearwood.
Ms. Yearwood.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tanya Yearwood, and I live at six oh nine Tannet Street in Kinston, North Carolina. Well, I would like to ask the city to reconsider removing the Shirt Factory lot from the resolution. By including that lot, it would allow Kinston Teens, the Health Center, and the city to work together on a full development that includes a potential grocery store. That site has sat empty for almost twenty years. And it ha, it has been a long time ago for us to have a grocery store there. Kinston Teens and the Health Center are working together to make that possible, and they need the city's support. Not only, what's really important is that the city is set to receive millions of dollars from the EPA grant to do hu, housing repairs for the city. And we need that because not long ago, I remember Ms. Blunt in here saying that they didn't have any more money to help people get their homes repaired. Do you know how many people on that side of town, or even in, in Kinston anyway, it's not only for East Kinston, it's for entire Kinston, that can use repairs for roofing, for windows, for just making their house energy efficient? Do the city don't want the millions of dollars? It's not all going to Kinston Teens. By including that lot and the grocery store as part of the grant application, it'll get, it'll, it will give the city a better chance. It's the largest vacant property in the area. And it would be a huge improvement for all of us because it is a eyesore. And if we keep, you know, deterring from it and not doing anything with it, it's just going to continue to sit there. And time is ticking, we have to do something to better our community. But remember what I said, the city will be getting a lot of millions of dollars behind this. And when have y'all ever tried to turn down some money? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yearwood. Uh, Madam Clerk, will there be any others?
No, sir, I actually received quite a few emails this afternoon. We do have a form online that is actually for public comments. However, the emails were from Justin, Justine Keever, Diana Humphrey, Zora Davis, Donna Riddick, Anna Kenzie, Crystal Suggs, and her Nika Ca, her Nika Cannon. I'm thinking that's the last one. And these were in support, Joyce Graham is the last one, and they were in support, uh, the strong support for the city of Kansas partnership with Kinston Teens on the EPA's Climate and Environmental Justice Community Change Grant, which will bring transformative and much-needed development to East Kinston through the creation of the East Kinston Neighborhood Hub and the rehabilitation and weatherization of homes. This partnership shows your dedication to creating meaningful, long-lasting improvements in our city. The hub project alongside the improvements to housing, the potential construction of a new Kinston Community Health Center facility, and the return of a much-needed grocery retail store to East Kinston are all exciting steps towards creating a more resilient and thriving neighborhood. I am excited to see how these efforts will positively impact the lives of residents and further the goal of equitable development. Thank you for your continued commitment to our community, and I look forward to seeing these projects become a reality. Um, all of these emails are identical, and they are from those named persons. But again, I'd just like to remind everyone here and outside that we do have a public comments form, and we would appreciate if you would go to our website, take a look at that form, and you can still put in your comments, they will be read. Thank you. And that's all, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, for those, the reading of those individuals that submitted, uh, letters online of support. Next, we're going to adoption of the agenda. If a council member wishes to revise the agenda, the most added later item will be entertained before the adoption of the agenda. Madam Clerk, I think we let the record reflect adding item number eight from the consent agenda, uh, which is EPA resolution. Under consent agenda, and also adding to the, uh, the action agenda, item number four. Let the record reflect, item number four is the EPA resolution as well as item number eight under the consent agenda from the work session. All right, will there be any other additions to the, uh, agenda that relates to, uh, those additions? Will there be any others? Okay. We'll just add it as action. Yes. All right. Yes, it's, it's, yeah, so we add number five to the actual, um, action for resolution, okay, all right. All right, so, um, having said that, uh, we had clarity on the additions to the, uh, agenda. Pulling number five, EPA resolution to, uh, action to item number four of the action agenda. All right, so having said that, will there be any other additions or deletions from the, uh, from the council? All right, here in CNN, entertaining motion to a broader agenda. Some move as a second.
Second.
Some move to probably second, under discussion. Under discussion, here in CNN, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion cares. Under minutes, consider approval of the minutes city council meeting held on Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Madam Clerk, would you like to entertain?
No, sir.
Mayor.
Yes.
If we could, um, add General Statute, uh, one forty-three A five, acquisition, um, and or exchange of real property to the closed session.
Okay, requesting a closed session for A five.
No, I wanted to add it to the last minute, just to add it.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
That's the only thing.
Yeah, the acquisition of property.
Acquisition of property. Uh, madam clerk, let the record reflect the addition of the closed session, uh, A five. Okay, as it relates to acquisition of property? Yes. All right, thank you much. Is the, uh, I know we was actually in the middle of an actual, uh, motion there, and I went to second. Um, is there any discussion?
I would like to make a motion, um, to have General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven.
A five.
A five, yes, sir. Acquisition, um, or exchange of real property added to the minutes from September the thirtieth
All right.
in the closed session.
That motion's on the floor, um, is there a second?
Second.
Some would have probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion, this is an amendment to the, uh, motion uh, to add the, uh, actual, uh, closed session from September thirtieth. All right, so having said that, all those affairs say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion cares. Who was the second down there, who was that? Pro ten. All right. All right. So under minutes. Consider approval of the minutes to the city council held on Tuesday, September thirtieth, at which we just did, uh, with the addition. So we're going to move to the consent agenda. All right, consider approval of special. Well, these items, uh, we discussed, um, in the work session. Items, uh, be one through, s, uh, actually be one through six. Seven. Madam Clerk, you advised on the, uh, five. We're taking five, move it to the action agenda, so. Yes, so it's going to be six. On the consent agenda. All right, so having said that, it'll be items one through six on discussion as it relates to, uh, under consent agenda. Question. I know we discussed. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the items one through six that we discussed in the consent agenda at the work session. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Some move to their second. Some move to probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Under the action agenda. Item number one, consider approval of physical year, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, the JAG, uh, program from Chief, uh, Keith Goyette. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
So move to their second.
Second.
Some move to probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number two. To conduct a public hearing to request rezoning from property RA twelve residential to RA residential, um, directed by.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is for a rezoning of vacant lot on Academy Heights Road. This request was tabled in the September seventeenth, um, meeting in order for the applicant to obtain additional information. Staff received a request from Graham King to rezone approximately forty acres from RA twelve to RA twenty. Mr. King proposes to use a part of the subject parcel for a sand mining operation. Mining is allowed with a special use permit in the RA twenty zoning district. This is an area of the existing property. The property is located in our extraterritorial jurisdiction. Surrounding zoning districts are RA twenty residential to the north, and RA twelve to the south, the east, and the west. The proposed rezoning is established so that the principal use of land is for low-density residential and agricultural purposes. The property is located within the rural land use sector. The proposed use is in compliance with the city's comprehensive land use, which recommends uses that would be appropriate in more sparsely populated areas but would not be appropriate in the more intensely developed residential zones. As you all know, a comprehensive plan is a recommend or, uh, document that is a long-term vision, normally spanning ten years for the future of the community. Our current plan was done in twenty fifteen and is right at the point for an update. This is a picture of the proposed location. This is a snapshot of both the city and the county zoning. The three highlighted properties also belong to the applicant, which shows where the GTP overlay district begins within the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Included in your package is an excerpt from the county zoning ordinance that includes a table of use for the GTP, um, AR, which is agricultural and royal, ru- rural and the dimensional standards affiliated with that zoning district. Both the city and the county zoning are consistent with the applicant's request to rezone to a zoning district that permits low-density residential. Included in your package was a list of permitted uses and uses that require special use for the proposed zoning district. Keep in mind that any of these uses may operate in this zoning district once the rezoning is approved. Staff is of the opinion that the rezoning is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and recommends approval. The planning board at the time, um, did make a recommendation for approval. Um, and they said that it was consistent or inconsistent with the comprehen- they, that it was consistent with the po- the comprehensive plan. In the board's motion, you must state whether the motion is consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan also. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I'm tracking, uh, director. So it's, uh, consistent with the, with the plan. All right, so, the recommendation from the planning board was to move, to move forward?
Yes, for the rezoning.
Right.
To approve the rezoning.
To approve, to approve the rezoning. Anything from the council as it relates to this, uh, and also, I think you, we had some history on this as far as, uh, we, we had it tabled and then came back to ask for additional information. That was correct?
Yes.
All right, we have that additional information.
The additional information really pertained to the special use permit. This is just for the rezoning.
Got it, tracking. Um, anything from the council as it relates to the rezoning of this particular, like, parcel?
I have a question concerning, I know what you just said, but when the gentleman was here before, at our last meeting, he said that this was gonna be used for sand mining?
Yes, ma'am, that's under the special use permit request. This is right before you now, it's just the rezoning to RA twenty. And so, any of those uses that are in that table can be, he could change his mind and say he doesn't want to use it for sand mining. Anything that's on that list, he can use it for.
Okay.
Any further discussion from the council as it relates to the, uh, rezoning? Having said that, um, is there a motion?
Mayor, this is a public hearing.
I'm sorry. Um, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
We're now, are you requesting that now?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there no further discussion from the council as it relates to this parcel? Having said that, we're going to a public hearing. We're now at a public hearing. Were there any to speak in favor of or in opposition of? Will there be any to speak in favor of or in opposition of? Mr. King, um, you can come right up and, and to the podium to the left, to my left, you're right, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. King.
Um, first, I want to say thank you for taking me this last time to give us a chance to, to review this. Um, uh, my wife and I would like to rezone this, uh, property at Academy Heights Road. Looking over this, the purpose of establishing a zoning district is our, you know, it says that you can, to provide orderly growth and development and to provide for efficient uses of the resources, and that's what we would like to do there. We were requesting to go to the RA twenty, and I, I can answer any questions from here.
Thank you, Mr. King. Any question from the council as it relates to, uh, um, him about the rezoning? Any question from the council? Thank you, Mr. King. Would there be any others to speak in favor of or in opposition of? Would there be any others to speak in favor of or in opposition of? Would there be any to speak in favor of or in opposition of? All right, hearing none, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. You're to back to the council. Anything from the council as it relates to this parcel or this, uh, rezoning? All right, hearing none, seeing none, um, at the request of the director Blunt. Is there a motion? So move, is there a second? So move to probably second. Under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, next, we, I, item number three. Uh, conduct a public hearing for special use permit request to operate sand mining operation directed by. And, uh, this requires a QJ, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Uh, we're just wondering, this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, so everyone desiring must be sworn in to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. It is also based on evidentiary, it's an evidentiary hearing, so it's based on facts, not opinions or thoughts. This is a special use permit request from Graham King to operate a sand mining operation on Academy Heights Road. The property is further identified as parcel number two four six three seven. This is an area of the existing property. Subject property is forty point eleven acres and is located in our extrator- territorial jurisdiction. The back of the property is located in the flood plain. Surrounding zoning districts are RA twenty residential to the north and RA twelve to the southeast and west. Surrounding land uses are vacant lots and single-family dwellings to the north and the east, vacant lots to the south, and a church to the west. This is a picture of the proposed location. This is a site plan for the proposed sand mining operation. It does show a berm in the front and the majority of the excavation taking place in the middle of the parcel near the rear without being in the floodway. This is a detailed plan showing the silt fencing along the property where it's going to be disturbed and the construction entrance and exit, as well as the floodway itself. And all of this should have been included in your package as well. This is the table of uses from the City of Kinston ordinance, which states it requires a special use permit. This is something that we need to change in our ordinance. It says conditional use permits, and that has been renamed by the General Assembly to special use permits, and so that's for, that's why we are here tonight. Both the council and the planning board had some general concerns about the amount of traffic, the noise, and the environmental impact of this process. Staff visited two of the san- sand mining sites in town on September, September nineteenth, October ninth, and yesterday. See if it's gonna play. Yes, this is a video of the site on Highway seventy. It's kinda close to the highway, but as you can see, there was no activity. Even on the subsequent days the staff went by, there was no activity. This is a picture of Mr. Everett Site Prep and Demo Site. So, it's not an abundance of activity, but I stopped by to take a decibel reading of a bulldozer loading a truck just to see how much noise would be generated. Traffic at both locations were extremely minimal, and the applicant would be able to speak more on the traffic pattern for the proposed site. This is the decibel level reading by the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health Sound. Um, you are now able to download a sound level meter on your, um, iPhones. Can't do it on Androids. But, um, when I did take the reading at the site where the truck was, um, actually operating, the noise level was around eighty decibels, and that is the level for normal truck operating levels, um, around eighty decibels. Also included in your package was a complete mining application required by the North Carolina Environmental Quality. General Statute seventy-four, Article seven is the Mining Act of nineteen seventy-one. The state realizes that mining is a basic and essential activity contributing to the economic well-being of North Carolina. They also realize that certain surface mining precludes complete restoration of the land, I mean, certain surface mining precludes complete restoration of the land, and were mindful that mining should be conducted in such a way as to minimize its effect on the surrounding environment. The article allows for mining while providing for the protection of the state's environment and for the subsequent beneficial use of the mined and reclaimed land. Permits, annual fees, and a performance bond are required for operation. The applicant will be able to elaborate because there were some highlighted areas in the application that was included to your meeting, in your meeting package, and he'll be able to elaborate why those things were highlighted. The applicant was able to also get pictures of areas that have been developed after sand mining projects were completed. This is Fountain Hill in Griffin, North Carolina. And this is another picture. This is a pa- a picture of Ralph's pit, and the applicant's gonna be able to tell you where that is too. Here's another picture. And yet, this is a third picture. Including in your package was the considerations for special use permits. At this moment, I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Any question from the council in respect as it, uh, pertains to the special use permit to operate sand mine operation? Before we go to, uh, public hearing?
Ralph's pit, where is that at?
The applicant will be able to tell you where that is.
Thank you.
I have no idea.
All right, so, um, be- before, uh, i- if, could you, we'll, we'll go to, to, to public hearing before we have those conversations. Thank you, God, so much. If you would ask that question, uh,
Yeah, the question.
Further. All right, so what we'll do is, uh, at the moment, we'll go to, uh, we're, we're in a public hearing. And those, and I'll push it to the attorney, but those that wish to speak, um, at this particular moment would have to be sworn, uh, in for prior to testimony. So, uh, Mr. Attorney, would you like to advise on the status of a QJ, a quasi- quasi-judicial proceeding as it relates to moving forward?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as Planning Director Blunt has already explained, this is a quasi-judicial hearing because this, uh, board is acting as basically the judge and the jury. Um, so you will be applying, uh, the law to the facts presented in the application. So that is why there's a need, because we were talking about the use, the use of property, we are invoking certain due process rights and this, um, of that nature. So, uh, because of that, the applicant and any witnesses will have to be sworn to give sworn testimony here. In addition to that, if anybody speaks in opposition of the applicant, uh, the applicant has the right to cross-examine them, just like you would in a court of law. Um, there are evidentiary rules and limits with respect to the code of evidence. Um, the, um, ma- uh, not the manager, the mayor would actually rule on those, uh, if there are any evidentiary objections that were to come up, and I can assist with those as well. Um, but this is a QJ hearing in that, um, if there's evidence presented that, uh, the applicant is sufficient and should be approved unless there is, uh, material credible evidence to the contrary that would suffice under the code of evidence in a court of law, then application should be approved. Um, I'm not advising you how to rule, but just want to put that out there that this is not a legislative decision where you have discretion. You are acting as a judicial body. Um, with that, if we can swear in, the applicant will start there. If there's anybody else who would like to, um, testify in favor or opposition of, let's come up front. Otherwise, we can have Madam Clerk start swearing in the witness.
Would there be any others outside of Mr. King to speak in favor or in opposition of, um, doing this quasi-judicial proceeding? Will there be any others? If there are any others, I need you to come, come, come over to the podium and, and get sworn in. All right, hearing none, seeing none, outside of that, um, Madam Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you?
Thank you, Mr. King. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. King, you may, uh, speak as it relates to the, uh, the mining, the sand mining.
Uh, as Ms. Blunt said, I mean, we submitted application. It seemed there was concerns about environment and traffic and different things, um, at the last meeting. And so, that's the reason I wanted to, to let everyone see that this is, you know, state-regulated and that, um, it's a nineteen-page, um, application that has to be filled out, then it has to be bonded. Uh, there'll be site visits, you know, throughout the process until the, the pit is completed. So I wanted to show that. She's showing you this, the Ralph's Road pit there. These were existing houses while the, while this mining, uh, operation was in intact. And so I just want everybody to see that too. And then Fountain Hill was designed after the fact. Um, our land is, is, there's a forty-acre tract there. Thirty-two acres of it is what we, we like to, to mine. And it's at the back, close to the, the, uh, the Blue Line Waterway. And then the front part, there's only eight acres left of that, that we were looking maybe to do some, uh, patio homes on.
All right, any, uh, further discussion from the council as it relates to, um, the statement made by Mr. King? All right, hearing none, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. King. This public hearing is now closed. Public hearing is now closed. You're to back to the council. Any further discussion as it relates to the mining operation? Hearing none. Seeing none. Like to entertain a motion. Some move to their second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject, um, there is a proposed, um, ruling in the agenda packet prepared by Ms. Blunt that contains, uh, findings of fact. Uh, so I would recommend we, uh, acknowledge that we've reviewed that. So I would recommend we acknowledge that we've reviewed that and have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed approval of the permit asset forth in the agenda packet so that we can officially adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law in this matter because it is a QJ proceeding. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Findings of fact and the table that was submitted by Director Blunt, we want to make that inclusive of the, uh, the motion. Having said that, entertain a motion to be inclusive upon the table of the additional requirements as it relates to the mining or the establishment of zoning overlay moving forward. So, if we would, uh, I would like to include that in the motion, and if we would, uh, the person that made the initial motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving the special use permit with the findings and facts included in our agenda package this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Swenson, is there a second? Some would probably say, under discussion, under discussion. Hear none, see none, all of those people say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. As it relates to the EPA revised resolution, um, is there a motion to approve the revised resolution? And I understand that there were some thoughts as it relates to tax parcel eighty-two eighty-eight. My question would be, does this limit the opportunity for this grocery store? And, um, I know there was a lot of support as it relates to this parcel being included, being inclusive of the resolution. And I see that Anna Kenzie also provided a statement, the old line as well, I made a statement here, um, as it relates to the support of this resolution with the inclusion of parcel eighty-two eighty-eight. My question to the council, and I have spoken, Mr. Attorney, and I understand that there's no conveyance of any of the parcels. It's just a, uh, these are a list of parcels to be included in the resolution. And wouldn't make a difference having it stay inside of the resolution eighty-two eighty-eight. My question to the council, is there any conversation that surrounds this for us to be able to be inclusive, to have this, to stay inside of the resolution and a discussion around the shared spacing and opportunity with Kent's Community Health Center as it relates to the statement that was made and pushed by a representative from Kent's Community Health Center that we know also well? So any discussion from the council as it relates to this tax parcel being added to or staying inside of this resolution? Because the list that we do have, you know, there's, none of these parcels have been conveyed. Those are suggestions and what would happen. Eighty-two eighty-eight will be an opportunity for shared spacing, just like any of the others. Any questions from the council that pertains to this? Any suggestions and recommendations as it relates to this parcel? My question would be, is, would it, would it be, uh, um, an option to, an option to leave this inside of the revised resolution? That's my question. And we can start by each individual person, and I can, and I can call each one of you names as it relates to this. And if you have any further discussion as it relates to the legality or information that surrounds this, we can refer to Mr. Attorney. Anybody?
I still make the motion of I approve it with the removal of parcel eighty-two eighty-eight. I make the motion that we approve the resolution.
Alright, any other discussion as it relates to parcel eighty-two eighty-eight? Any others? Any other recommendations?
Mr. Mayor, I don't wanna make a recommendation, but I wanna make a statement.
Alright.
Um, this, this, uh, resolution is to submit the grant for the EPA grant, correct?
It is.
And all the information that has to go in the grant doesn't specify a particular parcel, correct?
Right.
It includes all of these.
Right.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
Alright, any other, any other statements from the council as it relates to this?
Your Honor, if there is action taken to remove that parcel, I would also recommend we revise the title, which, which also references that as well, not just in the resolution of the body itself.
Alright, so in addition to that, we have to revise the title, uh, so in the form of that motion, whoever that makes the motion needs to make the motion that we actually change it in the heading of the revised resolution moving forward. So, with that recommendation from the, the attorney, is there a motion?
We got to take out the tax parcel eighty-two eighty-eight at the top of the resolution?
Yes, basically just revise the motion to take out tax parcel eighty-two eighty-eight.
Does this, okay, this has, this has nothing to do with the existing resolution we have with the health center?
No, not.
Okay.
It's, right.
So that, so that the health center one is still existing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's not, yes ma'am, there's nothing in this resolution as written that conveys away any property. This just simply says recommits the city's commitment to locating a site for this project, and it lists several parcels there. But it, it does not disturb the donation agreement in place with the health center, yes ma'am, that's correct.
And so this is about the, this impacts the grocery store and the hub?
So, so, yeah, if you, yeah, if you take this out, absolutely, it would impact the grocery store piece and the hub, absolutely, because you're talking about shared spaces as well.
My, Mayor, okay, my...
Ms. Seefor.
Um, about this, I was understanding that the major focus was the health, Community Health Center when this was presented. Am I not correct, or did I hear something wrong?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause we're having this discussion now about this large parcel, and if we, if the number one focus is the Community Health Center, because we desperately need that because of the space that they have now, then while we're having this discussion about this parcel eighty-two eighty-eight, if it's needed for the health center, and because they are going to have, they are going to need parking, so I'm not really understanding what's going on at this time.
Ms. Seefor, not to cut y'all off, what happened, the initial plan was when the health center came to us, they wanted the whole parcel. And they had a bigger plan or a bigger imprint they was planning on doing in East Kinston as far as building specs and everything else. When the financing went through or went down, they went and redesigned the project to fit on a smaller scale of the property.
I understand that.
Uh, I think the council concern was that if the Community Health Center does really well, the potential of other clients or other clinics or something else wanting to relocate there with them has been a concern for mo, I think, most of the council going forward. So that's why we wanted to keep all of that land for that particular purpose.
That's, that, what I, that is what I understand. So if the initial was for the health center, and this large parcel would be beneficial to them, we're having the discussion about it, it, it does make sense what you're saying. This is what I'm saying, so, um, what, what is going on?
So, so, the, the question is, I mean, just for part of clarification as it relates to the, the site as, as a whole, Kent's Community Health Center actually requested, or went to Kinston's as it relates to the grocery site piece, shared spaces on the site, the original site, which you have heard that here tonight. Even Anna Kenzie was here, and also she did a support letter as it relates to the site, right? Alright, so, um, when, when she came, she requested or asked and sent a support letter in today in support of the grocery piece. But in order to have a grocery piece, there needs to be shared spacing, or the, this piece need to be, parcel eighty-two eighty-eight, this resolution, the entire thing needs to go together, so that it'll be a better opportunity for the, the grant itself. And the grant is being accessed through the City of Kinston and the organization, right? So in order for us to have a better opportunity to receive the grant, this is gonna be a part of it, however. So this is why this was brought up in the beginning with. Alright, so, um, the, the, the question, you know, is, 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 are you gonna, are we gonna do this or not? Are we gonna leave it in so that you can have the opportunity, have shared spaces, have opportunity to be able to get the funding necessary for the potential grocery site and shared spaces of the Kinston, you know, hub, however? So, so that's my question, and are we gonna move forward? So if, if your question, I mean, or if you're still where you are, then I need a motion on the floor to be able to tell me exactly which way we're gonna go.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say this, if, if we do go with the parcel in, and the, and the grant is approved, do that, that mean we have to go with that particular parcel for everything to go the way the grant was submitted? 'Cause they, what we saying is they, uh, other properties around, right? So if we submit the grant, and the grant get approved, and there's a change of mind in what goes in the front, what goes in the back, that's an option for the council at that time, correct?
That's an option for the council, and that's an option for Kent's Community Health Center, I understand that, because they're number one, right? So they would have to say so as to what goes where. So, this right here, really and truly, doesn't have an impact, uh, an impact on whether or not, you know, you know, the Kent's Community Health Center has the opportunity to get the site or to move forward with the plans that they do have, so.
Allow me to say this, for the sake of the audience.
Yes.
And those that are watching, because, you know, it's, it's like, like, what's the deal, what's up? The reality of it is, is this, is that we've learned tonight that there's been conversations with Kinston Community Health Center. It was said that the discussions had been going on since April, April of, April of June, and that, and like, no one asked that. It, it was very clear that we were given the impression, and we were told, that we didn't, we hadn't heard anything from the Community Health Center. It had been a year. It had been a year. At the Zoom call in which respective members attended, that was when it was, it was shared. And so it appears now, as stated, that, that there had been updates given about the progress of the Community Health Center. And so if it appears that people are looking confused, it is because there was the lack of transparency and the failure to communicate the process. And so when we come in, and, and we're, and, 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 and we've got decisions to make, when you don't have the conversations so that we, you know what I'm saying, properly planned, you can properly get input from council, and so then you got tonight, you know, clarity being asked, and what we realized now what happened is, this is, this is, we have the Community Health Center who's extended an invitation, we would, that was shared with us. But the reality of it is, is, we hadn't heard from the Kinston Community Health Center in over a year. So, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that there are questions to be asked, you know what I'm saying, like, what, where are we with the, the share, the, the, you know, the funding, you know what I'm saying, because we were wondering, like, where you guys at? And so what I don't want it to appear is that, um, that this council is being apathetic. The reality of it is, is that when processes aren't rolled out clearly and transparently and in a timely manner, and information shared in so much as, again, due diligence can be done, then we end up in this place looking ill-informed. And so I don't, like I said, I, I, I don't want it, what I don't want it to appear that it is a lack of apathy. Because the reality of it is, is, in a, in a conversation about, because the reality of it is, is this, is that there has been a concern about the revitalization of southeast Kinston. And then when you look at the, the possibility, because a lot of times people just look for other people to do it, you do it, you do it, you do it. But when it does show that, you know, the City of Kinston has teeth in the game, a lot of times people are just waiting for us to throw our hat in the ring. And so it's not that we saying, um, it's a no to that, it is just the, the whole issue in the conversation, well, I'm stuck on, and, and I'm gonna be very honest, I am stuck on the idea that I was told that there was not any word, that there would not been any information about the Kinston Community Health Center, that it had been a year, that the meeting that was held via Zoom, and, and, right, and, and, and understand, it wasn't a secret meeting, because, you know, you, it couldn't be all council members, but, and so we have respective members there. That's held on a Friday. But I just know, you know what I'm saying, that this council looking, you know, disjointed this way, that there's, there's a backstory to it.
Thank you very much for those comments. Any, any other further discussion from the council as it relates to this right here, this parcel, this, this revised resolution relating to this parcel? You know, so, so the question would be, at this moment, if, uh, we wanna leave this in or, or take it out? And that's the, that's the bottom line there. And based off of those that are in support of the resolution that submitted information today, how does the council feel as it relates to leaving this, leaving this in or taking it out? I just need a motion, and if there's going to be a motion, I need to include the title change as well to the resolution as it relates to parcel eighty-two eighty-eight. Mr. Swenson?
Mayor, it's been a motion put on the floor.
Alright, so that motion, so restate the motion, and I need you to add the other part. Alright, so that motion, so restate the motion. And I need you to add the other part.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Kensington regarding the North County. And future development in the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard corridor.
What's, I need you to state the parcel number, I need you to. Right, right, right.
A resolution of the City of Council of the City of Kensington regarding the North County Tax Parcel Removal. Of the North County Tax Parcel eighty-two eighty-eight, former Kensington shirt factory site. And future development in the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson, that is clear. Is there a second?
Second?
So moved improperly second. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, uh the motion repaid him. Um under discussion. Under discussion. Under discussion. Hear none, see none. All those favorites say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Correction, Madam Clerk. Um do a roll call vote with the extent, um with the exclusion of uh Councilmember Suggs that is currently here at the moment. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Solomon? Councilmember Swenson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember C four?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright. Alright, so having said that, uh manager, manager Barwick, would you like to entertain?
Got one more item, number five, Mayor, the sale of property.
Oh, yes, that's the item uh number five, the sale of property with fifteen hundred dollars, correct? Alright. Uh is there a motion to approve uh the sale of this property, direct sale?
There must be some confusion. There's there's no action agenda on that item tonight. It was the, to instruct Ms. Blunt to.
Talk about.
Proceed with the property negotiation sale for that parcel.
So. Ta- thank you for the clarification again. Um having said that, um. Having said that, manager Barwick, would you like to entertain?
I know the council is aware, but just for the audience, I just wanted to um mention again that. We have our new fire chief Chad Jackson with us this evening, his first city council meeting. And I appreciate all the work he's done and uh look forward to working with him.
Congratulations Chief Jax, Chief Chad Jax, we appreciate it. Any further discussion, any uh thing from the council?
Just requesting um at the next meeting if we could have an update on road resurfacing. I do realize that we're getting into two to the cold months and normally that doesn't occur during the winter months. So just if we could just get an update on where we are with those.
Uh Steve, um have have the uh the reception of railways, have they been let or uh put out for bid for the. Uh approval for the budget that we're appealing the six hundred K for, six hundred, whatever it was, K for?
Yeah, we've we've actually taken uh two resurfacing projects. We awarded a resurfacing project in July and then we amended it with additional streets. In August, uh the contract uh is being signed and executed. Uh work was expected probably to start in March because at this time of year, if they got started. Weather's gonna be on top of them pretty quick. We don't want to end up with streets tore apart to resurface and then not be able to put the asphalt down. So in March, they will look to finish all of the work. They expect to have it all done in about four months. So it should start in March and I can get that whole list back out so you can see what all the streets are again.
Yes, sir, if you would, email me that list so I can let everybody else that asks me know about it on a consistent basis. Um uh I I know it's important to everybody, so.
And with that, so can we at least, cause like Mayor saying, you know, that's that's a, that's a very frequent question. Can we get a list of the streets that have been resurfaced this year? This, what year is this, twenty-four, this year, two thousand twenty-four?
Okay, well, so the the contract for last fiscal year through June thirtieth was awarded in July.
Right.
And then we added new streets to it, so nothing has been paid under that contract this year.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we um approved road resurfacing last year. And so the only thing I'm just asking is what roads have been resurfaced by the city in two, were there, if there were roads resurfaced in two thousand twenty-four. That's the only thing I'm asking is for a list of that. Not saying from this fiscal budget and what we approved. In June, I'm not saying that because I know we don't, we roll that, we're gonna roll that later. But I'm asking is what roads were resurfaced in two thousand, no, yeah, in two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's what I'm trying to just, to say that that money that.
Twenty-three, twenty, the last fiscal year, where I was really just, I really was thinking twenty-four, which would have been probably the spring months. Where where we are able to actually do the resurfacing.
There was nothing resurfaced last year. That money is part of what was awarded in July. That's what I'm saying.
So we didn't have any road resurfacing at all with the last, last year's budget?
The, we had money budgeted, that was added to the money, the money from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four was added to the twenty-four, twenty-five money. And made that award in July with that money. And then we had additional funds and we amended that with the fiscal, the current fiscal year budget. And added that and we have a million dollar project that will start resurfacing in March.
Right, so we have more money.
Okay, let me. So, exactly, so if we're saying that there were no roads done, let's just say no roads done.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I understand why, so you can do larger projects. I get it, but but my, my my question was, is just. When people ask, we're able to, if we're able to say we resurfaced this one, this one, and this one. A, B, C, D, but if you're, but if you're saying that there weren't any roads resurfaced, right?
I can, I can actually put together a list to show you for the last several years, what's been resurfaced every year. Maybe that'll make it a little bit clearer.
Well, yeah, well, and that, I mean, that can help too when when conversations are held. But it's just that, I just know this is, this question has just, it is, it's just continual. And just to be able to share with people the most recent streets that have been paved.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, uh thank you Steve and uh Councilwoman Solomon for that intense conversation around roads for sure. Um we'll definitely need it. Uh I just would like to say thank you. Yet go, uh Ashley, let me push back, um any other, any other conversations from the council, any other statements or anything you'd like to say?
Uh I do want to remind everybody that this week starts the start of early voting this Thursday. Uh we'll have six sites open in Lenore County, five of them in Kensington, one of them in La Grange for early voting. Um polls open at eight AM and this election includes everything from president. Um all the way down to our congressional representation and local school board and county commission races. Uh this year voter ID is also required in North Carolina, so make sure that you have a, a accurate or active either state issued ID or or other eligible ID. With you when you go and cast your ballot. Uh if you're not registered to vote or if you need to update your registration. Uh that is also something that you can do during early voting, but you cannot do on election day, so. Make sure you try your best to cast your ballot during early voting, um during those two weeks that are offered between October seventeenth and November second. Uh secondly, I do want to share that uh this month marks uh is, well, yeah, this month marks ten years since. Um I stepped out and took a huge leap of faith starting an organization to get uh young people in our community involved in making a difference here in Kensington, Lenore County. Uh at the time, Kensington was dealing with a lot of issues, uh gun violence being the the key issue at the time. Um on a near daily basis, we were having young people in Kensington, my peers, my friends, my classmates, either shooting somebody or getting shot. And there were so many conversations, even at this here days, of our local elected officials, our city councilmen, our our police and law enforcement leaders, our county commissioners, talking about. The violence in Kensington, what they were gonna do to stop it and address it, but they never engaged young people and we were the ones most impacted by the problem. And that has been the the core goal and the core effort of that organization for ten years now. Uh getting young people involved in civic engagement from showing up to city council and school board meetings to registering voters and getting them out to vote to. Transforming vacant and underutilized and neglected parts of our community into vibrant and thou- thriving spaces of activity. And I'm so proud of the work we've been able to do. Uh I feel that when I set out to run for city council in twenty twenty-one. Uh in many ways, it was a continuation of that work, but it also was a way to help chart a new path forward for the city of Kensington. Um this is a a city that I think has been for for some time, but especially over the last few years in recent history. Um at a very critical turning point. Uh there is a lot of opportunity, a lot of potential here in Kensington. There are literally thousands of jobs that have been created out in the global transport. Our downtown is in the precipice of a real revitalization if we do it right. Um and for so long, East Kensington, my neighborhood, my home, where my neighbors, my community members. Um are from and continue to be at and we love that community. Um we, for, for obvious reasons, for unclear reasons, um and and for things that are beyond even the city's control. Um that part of town has just been historically neglected and and disinvested in. And I'm so excited, there's so much momentum now for some projects to bring new life and new energy into this part of town. I'm so excited that uh the organization that I'm a part of has been so intentional about getting neighbors and neighborhood residents, getting young people. People who, you know, don't think that the city listens to them, don't think anybody listens to them. We're listening to them, we're engaging them, we're getting them involved in something new and something exciting, exciting for our community. And uh to to keep this vague and 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 in general about just the overall state of our community and the state of this council. Um I really want to implore my colleagues on this council to be intentional about how we engage with the community. How if there's something that we haven't heard about, a project we haven't heard about in a while, that we reach out and talk to them and ask questions about it. If there's something that we get an invitation to that could share or provide an opportunity for us to learn more about specific projects, whether that's. Uh a multi-million dollar development or just somebody trying to clean up their street, that we show up to those events, that we ask questions, that we interrogate them, that we. Do things to learn more about what's happening in our community when the opportunity presents itself. Um this has been such a draining meeting tonight, so draining. I'm sure all of y'all are tired, I'm I'm sure enough tired. And it didn't have to be this way. Uh I really think that there's so many opportunities for us as leaders to engage with our community. To ask questions, to learn more about what's happening, to reach out to our staff members and ask them about the specifics, the legalities, the intricacies of these different projects. We can prepare ourselves better so that we get in these meetings, they can be smooth sailing. Um if, I don't know if y'all have been to a county commission meeting lately, but I got one recently a few minutes late and they were already over. Like, they are in and out of there because of how, how, I hope, I guess, you know, from me not being on the county commission, but what my perception is. That they prepare themselves, they ask questions, they have some meetings before the meetings, it seems like, and they get things done. I would love for us to get to a point that we have that level of intentionality and care about our community, that we prepare ourselves, that we're thoughtful and considered about the things that are being proposed to us. That we research things, that we read the things that are presented to us and we ask those questions. And it's nothing wrong with asking questions in a public forum, I'm. I'm all for it. I think we need to present some questions publicly for the sake of ourselves and the sake of the audience. But I do think there are so many opportunities just for us to get engaged on a deeper level, that when folks invite you, that you show up. And even if you can't make them all, try not to miss them all. And I I think that's just so, so important for us as leaders to consider. Um there are some big things happening in Kensington, there are some big things happening in East Kensington. I'm so excited. I know some people probably think I'm discouraged by some of the events and conversations tonight, but I'm still so excited because there is really a a transformation happening in this community. And folks should want to be a part of it. So I'm glad to be a part of it, I'm glad to be here in Kensington, I'm glad to be from down the hill and I can't wait to see what happens in this part of town, so.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs, for those comments. Um I just want to say, uh good to see everybody, thank you so much. Shouts out though. Shouts out to uh KFD, um you know, Public Utilities, Parks and Rec. Uh PD, a- all our folks, but what I say that is because you, we helping the west out, you know, we do appreciate your efforts and and doing what's necessary. Um that trailer that set out to uh Grandeur Stadium, thank you for your efforts and helping fill trailers up to help send to the west, coordinated with uh. Um thank, thank you for your comments back there too, but I was talking, but thank you. Um the uh a- as it relates to uh helping our folks in the west, paying it forward is what it's about. This is what we do. Uh they come to help us, we come to help those in the west. So I do appreciate your efforts and our team that have pushed uh. Folks out to help those in the west and they're currently there, on the way, on the way back. So thank you for your time and thank you for everything that you do for our city. That's my time. I'll say this, make sure that you go out and access, oh no, I'm sorry, exercise your right to vote uh this year. Um a very vital moment, uh critical moment and uh our democracy will make sure that you are out voting, understand that. So make sure that everybody in this room, if you hadn't uh put a plan together to vote. Um how about let's, let's put one together and and vote by November the fifth. Early vote starts Thursday. And we want to make sure that, we want to make sure that each and every one of you have the opportunity. And also it's a holiday for the city of Kensington, so every person that's off, I want them at the poll, however. If they're not at the poll, hopefully you voted early. We look forward to it. Thank you. Uh already in the, in the, you know, in advance. Um I think uh the mayor pro ten want to say something?
I I did want to say, Mr. Mayor, I will be be providing a bus for people that uh don't have a ride to the post. So if you need a ride, don't hesitate to uh call.
What's the phone number?
Uh two five two, two eight six, nine seven nine eight.
Alright, two eight six, nine seven nine eight, that's a ride, that's a, that's a bus. Man, alright. So we look forward to seeing uh you all at the polls, uh and also thank you for your efforts and everything that you do. Here for the city of Kensington, to all those folks over here to my right, thank you so very much. Having said that. I entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, there a second? So moved, improperly second, under discussion. Under discussion. Hear none, see none, all those favorites say aye? Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries, we're adjourned, Madam Clerk, not await.